Good evening. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called in order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, virtually in room 137 of the Edison Building. Colleagues participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic restrictions. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video may be found. This evening, we acknowledge that our PS sites are situated on ancestral lands of the Dakota people. We acknowledge and honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members and Superintendent Michael Munoz, a non-voting ex officio member. Also present is the Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Seaberson. Ms. Seaberson, please call the call.
Thank you. Clerk Amundson.
Here.
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2.01 approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Ms. Seaberson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge, our Assistant Clerk is not feeling well tonight, so she is really kind of powering through this. We're all sending her our wishes that she feels better, but it's a tough meeting. And thank you, Ms. Seaberson, for being here even under difficult circumstances. 3.01 transforming the RPS summer experience. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Amy Ike, Executive Director of Committee Education, will provide this information for us tonight. Amy?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board members. I am happy to provide an update on some work that we have been doing internally in the district to look ahead to summer. So while it's perhaps the coldest time of the year, we are looking ahead to those better days. So I have a quick update for you, and we'll leave time for questions at the end. I want to let you know this is the time of year when we typically talk about summer, but we know that the circumstances this year are quite a bit different from normal, and we are taking the time to really think through whether we need a bit of a different approach this year. So the slide you see in front of you indicates what a traditional set of summer opportunities might look like in the school district. And as close as possible, the size of those circles indicates the number of students involved. So you can see, we have some larger programs and some smaller programs typically going on with a mix of academics and enrichment. As we look ahead to this summer, we are especially focused in these four of those program areas. What we would typically call summer school for our K through 8th graders are high school credit recovery options, our English learner and newcomer program for those who are new to speaking English or new to the country, and our program especially designed for our students with special need called the Extended School Year Program. These programs don't operate in isolation. We are also wanting to provide them with district-level resources. Community Ed is a partner, as well as some of our community organizations that are partnering as well in this work. So in a district this large with this many students, as you might imagine, this requires quite a few people. So the first bullet there shows you the different departments within the school district that all have some connection to providing an effective summer learning program. And we have representation from all of those folks engaged in this discussion right now, along with the groups in the second bullet. We've got our partners at Boys and Girls Club, Cradle to Career, the library, and the YMCA in initial discussions with us. And we've done some initial family engagement as well as staff engagement, and that will continue into what I'm calling the design phase. So so far, those stakeholders have told us some things about student needs this year that might differ somewhat from what you would typically see, or might be more accentuated this year, having been through a significant disruption in our traditional instructional model. So you can see the social skills and emotional piece, students feeling some anxiety and needing a little bit more stability or to reduce that anxiety. We certainly have the academics. Some people, staff and parents alike, feel like some development has been missed because of the isolation. We're talking about missing language exposure, especially for our English learner population, possibly even not having the stamina students used to have for full-day face-to-face learning, some just missed events and experiences together with each other and together with their teachers. We know that our transition years, kindergarten, 6, 9, and graduation are severely disrupted, or they were this last year, and certainly credit deficiency at the high school level. So the group that you saw listed earlier has met four times so far and has identified from the stakeholder input and their own experiences, four different focus areas for student development. The academic area that we would traditionally focus on in summer school, the experiences that create the context in the brain that we can hook new learning to. So that can come in creating new things, in doing experiments, in field trips or visiting places. They all create new knowledge in the brain or context in the brain that we can hook new knowledge to. The interpersonal-type skills, my own attention, but also my self-awareness and my awareness of others around me and my ability to collaborate with others, and then wellness in all of the different meanings. So focusing on those four areas, we feel like focus is more on the whole child than an academic focus only in summer school. So as we think forward to 2021, the group that has been meeting has begun to identify some program priorities from a district framework level. And you'll see these are marked draft because we have not finished this work. We have some more stakeholder input to do, and then we have some tools that we want to create so that the folks who are designing the program have the background information they need. But we've identified five program priorities so far that we want to design a summer experience around. The first one being human connection, knowing how that was missing over the past year. We know it's important to have voice and engagement of the participants and their families, as well as our staff members and our partners who act in that staff member role. The higher the voice and engagement level, the more learning. We know that there's a direct connection there. We also are committed to a community of belonging, and that in this context means celebrating diverse identities, doing that identity work within the program, celebrating diverse cultures, making sure everyone feels represented and that they belong. We want to focus on high-interest programming. So that might look like project-based learning, might look like prioritized learning, might look like active research at different levels. And we want to focus on school success skills and embed these in everything we do. So the academic skills, the executive function or attention skills, emotional regulation. So far, those are the priorities that we've established for this coming summer. So what do we need to do differently? So the group in thinking about summer is acting in a context of a desire to really overhaul or reformulate summer learning that has existed for a long time, but perhaps without enough resources to make that happen. This year and next year, we do have some COVID relief dollars that can be allocated towards summer programming, which gives us a little flexibility to be able to take on some of this. So the idea the group had was that we probably can't do this all in one summer, especially with this year being exceptionally difficult for staff and students, that we may need to do this over two summers with a year of study in between. So this first set of proposed shifts is in the context of being the first summer, so a step toward what we would like, followed by some research in the second or in the year in between, and then the second summer following in 2022. So for this summer, we're proposing some shifts in the practice of what we've offered for summer learning. So extending both the days and the hours of the summer experience by blending services together. So our teachers would not have to sign up for long days or all of their summer. We're looking at how do we give students more of an experience and still build in some flexibility for the provider. We want to focus on that high interest and experiential opportunities. We want to engage students and parents in the design process. We want to increase planning time. We've heard this for several years, that in order to really do something different, our staff need time together to plan that new program. We will maintain small group sizes, partially for COVID, but also because we know that's effective for relationship building. There's a request to embed mental health experts in the process this summer, both in the planning and in the implementation, knowing that there are some perhaps more intense mental health needs from the COVID experience, but also because we know that our social-emotional health is one of the contributors to effective learning. We're looking into some innovative programs that would provide paid opportunities for some of our older students that might need to skip our summer programming so that they can earn income. And we're looking at ways that we could perhaps have them help out with our younger students for part of their day and then do some credit recovery in the other part of the day. We are focused on braiding or combining these funding streams to be able to expand our options this summer. So targeted services funding is what we typically use for summer school, but we also have 21st Century Program funds at some of our schools, and then the COVID relief funds as well. And then finally, we want to gather some data from this summer so that we can take that growth model over two years and get toward our goals. So the work in progress at the moment focuses on stakeholder input, staff, students, families, our partners. We're building a district framework, and by framework, we mean sort of a set of expectations, a vision for what it could look like. And then along with that, we're working on a toolkit for site teams to use to actually develop the program. And you see some of the elements there. We're also in parallel working on the budget plan. And then finally, if we need to provide any professional development to make all of this happen to Fidelity, we know that that may be a piece of this spring as well. So this is what our timeline looks like this spring. We began in December and January with some initial stakeholder input. We're now working on the framework and the toolkit, and that input effort will shift over to the design side of things. Then in March, we will work on program design, and that will eventually get into the logistics and the preparation, and finally staffing and registration. So next school year, we expect to do some follow-up work. We want to look at the growth model. What did we do well? How much did we do? You know, the results-based accountability questions. How much did we do? How well did we do it? And is anyone better off? We want to confirm those priorities that we established or adjust them if appropriate. We really want to think about how do we move forward on the project-based learning, the participatory action research at the older grades? How do we expand engagement with partners? Any further shifts in practice we might need? How do we expand that toolkit? And then how will we update our assessment plan and plan for additional PD that's needed before the following summer? So that's as far as we've gotten with our efforts to date, and I would just open it up for comments or questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Any questions, comments? Ms. Nathan?
Thank you for all of this work. I know we first, I first heard about it at our family engagement meeting when some of the stakeholder input was starting, and to see the progress you've made so far is great. I have a question about resources. So I know the first slide really talked about the numbers that you had served in the past. And it's possible with how this year went, we may have a lot of families who are looking for opportunities for their students over the summer that they may not have looked for before. Maybe they didn't think about it. So first of all, what's our capacity for serving even more students than we usually do? And what kind of funding resources are you looking for from the district, from the budget that we have? And is there anything we can do as board members to expand the resources, perhaps from the state, that might help us to fund this work?
Well, I'll take a stab at the first part of that, and I saw Mr. Munoz turn his camera on, so he might want to say something as well. Did you want to say something first?
No, go ahead, Amy.
Okay. So I don't know that we have a numerical answer for the what is our capacity yet. Because we're at the district framework part and we haven't done communication, registration, and staffing yet, we don't know at this point quite how large a program we will need. I would say that our approach takes into account that we may have teachers who are not interested in working this summer. We realize that. We have that every summer, of course, but we are looking to staff this in a little bit different way. In the past, someone has signed up to teach, and they've typically taught three straight weeks, four or five days a week. We are looking at a model where they could sign on to potentially teach a week or two weeks and then not necessarily commit the rest of their summer. And the idea would be that we would bring together partners, teachers, paraprofessionals, mental health professionals, and have a team of people, a team approach to staffing our experiences so that not one set of people has to take on the entire thing. And we do believe that will help out in encouraging that professional performance or that professional participation. We did talk a little bit about COVID funding, and we've earmarked some dollars from there. We have an estimate of how much targeted services we can generate with this program. So at this point, I don't know that we have a hard dollar amount, but if there may be asks of you or of the community to help out with certain pieces. So I would say as the design develops and gets beyond this district framework into specifics like themes of camps and need for expertise, we may want to ask our community to help out with either their their knowledge, their expertise, or with resources. So we'll know that a little bit later this spring.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Ms. Ike, I just have more of a comment that as a newer board member, I'm just so impressed by not only the clearly behind-the-scenes work that's been going into this, but the amount of collaboration that I'm, it's already evident to me that there's so many people involved in this project. And I think it's, you know, right on target for helping our students and our community recover from what we're dealing with. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Garcia?
I would also like to echo what Director McLaughlin shared. I also was wondering if you wouldn't mind just giving me a rundown again, because I'm also a new board member, about what the mental health services in the summer opportunities would look like, or what kind of resources you might need in that respect.
Again, we're in the kind of broad framework stage of this, but what we have been discussing was an embedded mental health professional, either district staff or going beyond the district, that could help in the planning of the content and the structure of the day, but also be available both with broad lessons, small group help, or individual assistance if that's needed, you know, based on student need, individual student need.
Amy, I have a question too. How, there. How will students register for this? How will we find out? How will they find out about the opportunities? How will they register? Will they be invited? Staff who know that they have certain kids who would really benefit from some of these? And will transportation be provided?
Yes, yes. And yes.
Good.
How they will find out about it? We will have an entire communication plan. One of our subcommittees within this planning group is communication and marketing. So we know that we will need that in multiple languages. We will need to be able to make clear what the menu of services includes. And then for the targeted services funding, each child needs an individual development plan that talks about where their needs are and how summer will address those. And it's not an extensive planning like you might think of with a special ed IEP, but it is that level where we will need to know which students could benefit the most from the programming, and we will work with parents on identifying, you know, the specific needs we'd like to address in the summer. That doesn't mean that there won't be a broader opening for other students as well. We just want to make sure that at least those that we know would benefit the most are, have a space, have accessibility. And transportation is provided for that, yes.
Good answers. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Ike, thank you so much. This is, this is really exciting and so important. Thank you.
You bet. Mr. Munoz, I think, had something he wanted to say.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks again. 3.02 Above and Beyond. This is an announcement. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, this is, we are going to put up the slide here that shows you our Above and Beyond for the month of January and part, end part of February. And just like normal, I will read a couple examples, and then I think I saw Jenny jump on so she can select a winner for us. The first one is for Justine from Rochester Alternative Learning Center. Justine was new to the ALC last year. In March, when the virus hit, she was thrust into the role of learning about and then teaching all of us about Google meets and Google classrooms. She really became the guru on all things virtual. I know that wasn't going to be her original role, so I wanted to recognize her for stepping up into the unknown and doing a fantastic job at it. She makes virtual workshops fun and engaging with great groundbreak, groundbreakers and activities. She is very patient while getting the staff to understand jam boards and virtual breakout groups. She's truly, excuse me, jam boards and virtual breakout groups. She truly is a great facilitator. The next one is Ms. Elliott has gone above and beyond for EL students during distance learning. She calls each family daily to remind them of their child's EL Google meet to ensure that they all show up. She also helps me communicate with families at any given time. She values education so much and has put in so much effort to make student learning continue even through the pandemic. I'm grateful to the work alongside her and am inspired by her daily. And the last one goes to the Paper Tiger staff. Always the Paper Tiger staff come through when I need them. Last-minute orders, corrections, need it tomorrow. They have cheerfully and gracefully helped me out many times. Thank you for all your work. So I'll turn it over to Jenny to draw our winners.
Thank you, Superintendent Munoz and the other board members. My name is Jenny Amundson, and I am President of the Rochester Public School Foundation. One part of the mission of our PSF is staff recognition and appreciation, and this is a wonderful way to do it. Tonight, one lucky winner will be chosen to receive a $25 gift certificate to a local business. And would someone like to draw a number between, we had, I think it was 16? So if someone wanted to pick a number between 1 and 16?
I see Ms. Garcia's hand is up.
Thank you so much.
Eight.
Eight. Okay, and I just put these in reverse alphabetical order, so it is Kim Schmeck, I can't write it all out, Schmeck Hansen from Gifts. So we will get her a $25 gift certificate, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Amundson. Appreciate that. 3.03 School Board Committee Assignments Updates. School Board members and committee work that you've done in the last few weeks, anyone want to report on what you've been up to? Ms. Nathan?
The community, the CCIAC, has been working on recruiting members so that we can start a process of reviewing the next-gen science standards and our other work for the year. And last count, and Ms. Witchman can correct me, it looks like we have about 22 members of the committee, and they include parents and community members, parents and community members, and alumni, and students, and district staff. And our first meeting is February 22nd, so I'll bring a report to the school board meeting after that. And the policy committee met, and we organized all of our dates for the year. And board members can expect that when we do briefing items for policy, we'll do it on the second meeting of each month. So we're trying to get on a regular schedule of when you can expect the policy work to be done. And we're also working with, setting a date to meet with some of our students from the community on the latest equity policy draft.
Thank you. Ms. Nathan, I know that policies are always a high point of every, every meeting. That's, it's just one of the most fun things we do. Also, just to be clear, CCIAC, that's the Curriculum Advisory Committee. Good. Ms. Workman?
Last week or so, I sent an email to my representative in the Minnesota Legislature, who is Nels Pearson, and asking him to support H, House Bill HF483 because it will index the pupil formula to inflation, and also to support HF292 because it gives boards the authority to renew an existing operating referendum. And I gave a little bit of rationale for each of those, and I'd like to read to you his response. "Thank you for reaching out. I appreciate hearing from you. I will take some time to look into HF483 and HF292 as I proceed through this legislative session. I will keep your thoughts in mind and will reach out if I have any questions. Best, Nels." So he heard the message from me, and I will keep reminding him of it and other issues which continue to come up before the legislative session. So he heard the message from me, and I will keep reminding him of it and other issues which continue to come up before the legislature. If you have not had an opportunity or taken the opportunity to write to your representative, I would encourage you to do so. And that's my report. So it's kind of a legislative report.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Workman. Anyone else? I have two quick updates. One is from the Family and Community Engagement Committee. Our last meeting was about mindfulness and about how adults, as well as students, especially now during a time when there's tremendous stress for everybody, in practicing mindfulness, which, as it turns out, is not a complicated thing to do, can really help to regulate their own emotions, to get in touch with how they feel, and be healthier both physically and emotionally. Another issue that this group discussed was about curriculum for children, especially our children who are BIPOC communities, and how important it is, and Ms. Nathan alluded to this with the curriculum, how important it is for our children to be able to see themselves in the books they read, in the fields of study that they get into, see people who look like them, who live like them. They need to see that and hear about the history, about the contributions that so many different people have made, and they need to hear about them early and often. And I really do believe that our district is laser focused on doing that and ensuring that our curriculum is really inclusive and diverse. The Student School Board, this last week and then this week, both the middle school group and the secondary group met with their principals, and they told their principals what kind of experiences they want to have to feel more like part of their school community, possible ways that they could come into the schools physically in small groups safely, so that they could get in touch physically with their buildings, as well as fun kind of activities they could do virtually with other students that are not necessarily academic. Principals were there last week. The high school principals will be there this week, taking notes about this kind of outreach that we can do for our secondary students. Any other reports? Thank you. 3.04, Boundary Advisory Committee. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, John Carlson, Executive Director, Business and Finance, will give us an update on the work that the Boundary Advisory Committee's been doing. John?
All right. Thank you, Chair Marvin. Superintendent Munoz. As Superintendent said, I'm going to give you a quick update on where we're at with boundary adjustments. So as people remember, we did contract with Cooperative Strategies, a national firm based in Ohio. So we're working directly with Scott and Matt. They are very knowledgeable in what they are doing and leading our group through this process. We had Matt and Scott pick the 25 people that are on the committee. This was not picked by RPS staff. People were allowed to apply to be on this committee, starting on December 3rd, and I think it closed around the 14th. And then they did a random draw through there. And all we really told them was, we don't want it to be loaded with staff members. So make sure that if you get more than five or so staff members, that you throw them back in the hat and keep going until you get more representation from the community. So they ended up with six staff members. That's because one person from the community had declined to be on it. So the next name they drew was a staff member. We have a city planner represented, a realtor, 11 parents, and then six other community members. These are people that don't have kids enrolled in the district at this time. We do have two high school students I saw on the current list as of today. So I think they were trying to still get one more so that we had one student from every high school. There are a few of us that are providing support to the committee, whether it's running different questions down or answers to different questions that they might have. But we are not the decision makers. We're really letting Matt and Scott lead the committee through this work. You may have seen this before, but I just wanted to quickly show you that when we surveyed the community, the number one desire of the community was, the second one on the list, attempt to create boundaries that assign students to their closest school. And I'm going to move right on to the next one and show you. So when we had our first committee meeting a few weeks ago, they brought back a proposed boundary that did just that. It put every address to the closest school that it's located to, just to see how that would sort out. And you can see by the chart on the left that that's pretty impossible to end up with a boundary that's going to be all kids going to the closest school. Many kids will go to the closest school near their house, but some are not going to be able to. For example, in the Churchill Hoover area, there'd be 986 kids enrolled in that school when there's only room for 567. So it'd be 174% capacity. And then on the low side there, we'd have Elton Hills at 183 students on a building that holds 432. So there'd only be 42% of the students filling the spots there. So again, that was just a warm-up for the community to realize that, yes, this is what the community has asked for. This is the challenge you're going to have, though, and you're not going to be able to come up with a boundary that meets that number one criteria right away. Same thing with our middle schools. When they assign all addresses to the closest school, Willow Creek would be enrolled 117%, but the new middle school in Northwest would be enrolled at 42%. So they're going to have to do some shifting and shuffling around to make boundaries that are relatively balanced. And I was going to say it on the previous slide. What we're really shooting for is no school would be enrolled over 100%. That's a given. That we want all of our schools to be under capacity because we will have enough space to do that. And ideally, schools would be enrolled about 80 to 95%. So that's kind of the sweet spot we're trying to work towards, is that when this is all said and done, when we ask you to make a decision, the projected capacities will be at about 80 to 95%. So at our next meeting tomorrow night, what we're going to be working on is, they have divided up, and they is the Cooperative Strategies, they've divided up the whole community into what's called Planning Units. And these are little blocks of groupings of houses that, you know, align to roads, align to boundaries, things like that. And they're going to break us up into small groups, and they're going to have the committee work on balancing out the boundaries by moving planning units around. So it should be a pretty fun process for the volunteers to work on. I think there's going to be at least three breakout groups for the 26 people. So there'll be smaller groups to kind of share some ideas. And I'm guessing we'll probably all get to compare the results at the end and see what they look like. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Again, we have four more meetings scheduled with the Boundary Advisory Committee, and we plan to bring back a recommendation, or they will present a recommendation to you sometime in May for your approval for boundary changes that take effect the fall of 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Mr. Barlow?
Excellent presentation, John. Undoubtedly, some, well, all said and done, there may be some community members who felt that they didn't have an opportunity to provide input along the way. So how can we perhaps set that off now to ensure that there's a mechanism for community members to perhaps forward concerns and/or ideas to the current group?
Thank you very much for reminding me of that important step. So once we get some proposals here to actually get feedback, and I think that estimated timeframe was in April, we plan to schedule some community listening sessions or some online tools so that people could even put in their address and see, how will this affect my house? What's being proposed? And then they can leave their feedback and comments based on that. So there's opportunities, there's going to be more than one opportunity or one way to give that feedback. And we're estimating April as that timeframe.
And Ms. Nathan.
So I think when we originally talked about the Boundary Committee, we had talked about having us rotating the school board members attending the meetings to observe. And I believe Director Amundson attended the first meeting, and I know that there's one tomorrow night. Do we have a board member assigned to attend?
That is such a good question, Ms. Nathan, and I wish you hadn't asked it in front of everybody else because the board chair just found the message to school board members that she thought she had sent out about 10 days ago, still in her draft folder. Our agreement was that we would send a representative, probably a different one each time, just to be there, not to vote, not to really have input, but just to observe what was going on. So when people asked, what's happening, we'd have someone who could talk about that. And as long as you did bring it up, and thanks a lot for that. If there is some, a board member here now who is available tomorrow evening, who would like to volunteer, you can certainly either tell me right now or email me later, and you would be the one to go. But the idea is that we'd rotate through this. So, thank you. My fault.
Are all the meetings at the same time in the evening?
Yes, we have, yes, we have them all scheduled for 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That was, we looked at really at what people had said when they applied to be on it when they were available. And the majority of people said in the evening is when they were available, so.
And at this point, at least, they're all virtual.
That's right. This would have been an in-person process, obviously. But for right now, it's over Zoom, and then they'll put us in breakout rooms for those small groups.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
So is that true as well with the day of week then? Wednesday evenings only, or will that be rotated?
I do, yes, thank you for saying that. I do believe they pick all Wednesdays. As I'm just forwarding ahead, they do look like they fall on Wednesdays.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlson, has there been any talk yet with the consultants or among this group about whether the high school boundaries are apt to be changed a bit?
Thank you very much for bringing that controversial topic up. That has been asked.
To make your life harder. You're welcome.
Yes, it's been brought up all the time. And the answer we have given is, it is not the intent to change the high school boundaries. However, once the middle school boundaries change, the committee is going to look at that and say, does it make sense to align any of the high school boundaries to maybe the new middle school boundaries? But that's going to be challenging with four middle schools and only three high schools. So, you know, an option maybe just to leave them alone. But as the group is working, they are noticing that one of our high schools has about 1,500 kids, another has 1,600, and then another one is going to have about 2,000 next year. So we're getting a little bit lopsided even as the boundaries sit today.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you for the work you're doing in this. It's so important. Appreciate it. Moving on, 4.0 Consent Agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to remove?
Chair Marvin?
Oh, Mr. Munoz?
Don't we have 305 COVID update?
We have 305 COVID update. That has been added. Thank you. Absolutely. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm going to start this off, and I think Kathy has some slides to share, but wanted to give you an update on the updated COVID dashboard. Just to remind board members, the top two sections is where we are since the beginning of the school year. The left number is total number of positive cases. And then to the right of that is the number of individuals that were quarantined based on those 469 positive cases. And then you can see the breakdown by staff, pre-k to fifth grade, and then secondary student. Here in the middle, this is the most current updated number. From February 8th to February 14th, we had 16 positive cases. Two of those were staff, four were elementary students, and 10 were sixth through 12. And those 16 impacted 35 individuals that had to quarantine. And if you can see, it was only secondary students that had to quarantine based on those 16 positive cases. And then the number below is the previous week's information, so you can compare from week to week. And this is also on our district website, so individuals can go to there and see the updated COVID numbers for just our school district.
Thank you. And Mr. Munoz, the quarantine, that includes students and staff, not family members related to those students and staff?
Right. Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Munoz?
Okay, I think I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Okay, and we have, Mr. Barlow and then Ms. Workman have questions. Mr. Barlow?
Okay, and Superintendent Munoz, I don't know if you would have this information readily available or not, but are the private schools, do they, to your knowledge, maintain a dashboard such as we? Or are they, I'll just stop there. Do you know if they're identifying to the level that we are?
I'm not aware if they are. The only thing I'm aware of is that if they do have to report numbers to the state, and there is, I don't know what kind of list you want to call it, it's a list you don't want to be on. But when you've had, I think, at least five transmissions within a building, then you get identified by the state on that list. And I do know some of our other schools in our area have been on that list. But I'm not aware that they publish a dashboard like we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Workman, did you have a question?
I do. So I don't know if the superintendent or anybody in the district has had the opportunity to thoroughly review the new CDC recommendations slash guidelines that came out recently. One question I had about that concerning schools, is the recommendation still six feet? Is it three feet? Is it whatever we can do?
Well, the new CDC guidelines comes out as six foot. We are still waiting for our state public health department to come out with new guidance, based on the new CDC guidance. We anticipate, we may hear from either governor's office or the state public health yet this week. So there could be some changes. But as far as the six foot is something that is the guidance that came out of the CDC.
Okay, and then I have a couple of follow-up questions. Is that all right, Chair Marvin? Okay, thank you. So one of the things that was mentioned in the guidelines, which I have not sat down and thoroughly read, but I have had an opportunity to look at them briefly, is that they refer to schools that are in different colored zones, the red zone being the worst. Do you have any idea where our school district lands on that? Or is that something we're still waiting to hear from the state as to how we would be identified?
Yeah, I think we need to do that. But we are also working with our county public health on that. We actually are on a meeting. I think that's something that we will discuss on Thursday at our COVID advisory team meeting.
I know that there were several things that struck me about the CDC guidelines. First of all, they were not requiring teachers to be vaccinated, but they were highly recommending that teachers be vaccinated. I'm not sure if you have any idea where we are in that process. I understand that, you know, teachers are certainly not required to let you know if they've been vaccinated. But, you know, I hope there has been a large number that have had the opportunity to be vaccinated or will in the near future. I see nodding, so.
Yeah, I can give you what we do know as of today. And unfortunately, this week's vaccines, so far, we haven't received several of those. But as of today, we believe that we've had 1,541 staff been offered the opportunity to be vaccinated.
Okay.
We have a total, you know, we have a total of 3,260 staff that we have to get, that we have to provide the opportunity to be vaccinated. That includes our employees and then all our contracted employees, like bus drivers and individuals like that. So I think we're right around roughly around about 47% of our staff have had the opportunity to be vaccinated.
Okay, and when you say, when you, in that first number, 1,541, that's out of all of our employees and not just limited to our teachers and/or paraprofessionals? Is that correct?
Yes, but we do have, we do have, I think it's out on our website as well. We have a priority list that lists the priority that we did. So I think we've gotten through Group 1, and we're in the middle of Group 2 right now. But we still have quite a ways to go. We're hoping we can get another week like we had a couple of weeks ago, where we had over 1,000 opportunities made available. Uh, we're hoping we can get another week like we had a couple of weeks ago where we had over a thousand opportunities made available to us. So we're hoping that something like that comes around here fairly soon.
Okay, it's, it's been an awfully long time since I have been a teacher in the classroom, and even longer than I taught elementary school, but is it, will it be possible for students to maintain a six-foot distance when they are all back in school on March second?
Uh, that's probably going to be a challenge. Uh, we do have some classrooms, you know, when you get up to uh, like fifth grade, I think we could have classrooms where there may be thirty-one students. And it will be a, a challenge to keep that six-foot distancing between students. Um, you know, we will try to maintain that six-foot distance between this teacher and the students, but from student to student, that, that'll be challenging in some of our classrooms.
Okay, and then um, do we have any idea of how many parents may be choosing to keep their elementary students in distance learning?
I don't have that number. I think it.
Which would alleviate, I mean, that would alleviate some of the pressure on the numbers in the classroom.
Yeah, I think when we started in the fall, it was about twenty percent of the elementary fam- families stayed with D L. I think right now we're right around that twenty percent, give or take a percent here or there. Uh, when we um, filled out a questionnaire for our secondary students, uh, it ranged anywhere from twenty-two percent to thirty-one percent between the middle schools and the high schools are electing to stay D L.
Of course, we don't know whether the twenty percent would be evenly spread across all classrooms as opposed to maybe, you know, one class has thirty-one students and another class has, you know, fifteen or twelve, which I can see would, would be a, be a challenge. So, um, I think those are all the questions I have for the, for the moment. So, um, thank you for the responses.
And I believe that Ms. Nathan has a couple of slides to share.
I do. Hang on. Here. So we wanted to give an update to the community because we know that there's been a lot of interest in the CDC guidelines that were released on Friday, February twelfth. So first of all, we wanted to make sure that our community knew where they could see the guidelines. And this is the link to the CDC webpage that has all the documentation that the CDC released on Friday. Um, the CDC guidance, and what does that mean for our next steps? Is that we're in contact with Olmsted County Public Health and the Minnesota Department of Health as these new recommendations are being evaluated. We're unsure at this point if this will impact Governor Wells's safe learning plans and the guidance in, in there. As Superintendent Munoz said, we've heard that there will be an announcement later this week, but we do not have a time or date for that yet. Our priority remains getting all of our children back into school full-time while keeping our staff and students safe. And as guidelines evolve, we will continue to follow the science and ensure that we put our community education professionals and students in the best possible place during this pandemic and these historic times. So just to review, so everybody remembers where we're at right now today is we have a plan to return to in-person learning for elementary, pre-K through grade five on March first. And we have a plan to return to in-person learning for grade six through twelve on April fifth. And our upcoming uh, decision process or milestones that we want the community to be aware of is that we do have a COVID advisory team meeting this Thursday, the eighteenth. And we're scheduled for our next regular school board meeting on March second. And we want to make sure that the community knows that any decisions on changes to those learning models can only be discussed and voted on by the school board at public school board meetings. So, um, keep um, to our uh, school board webpage, our board docs and the um, uh, social media. And you'll can get um, meeting reminders um, there. You can see our agendas there for those, for that upcoming meeting. And any news um, would be delivered in um, in those venues.
Thank you, Ms. Nathan. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, we'll continue uh, with our consent agenda. And now are there any uh, items that board members want to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, someone move approval.
Move approval, Nathan.
Second, McLaughlin.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson, will you call, will call vote, please? Thank you, Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. And Superintendent Munoz, do you have retirees you'd like to call out?
Yes, our first group is our teacher retirements. Uh, the first one is Jay Adams, social teacher, social studies teacher at Kellogg Middle School. Retirement effective end of the day, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district thirty-two years. Lisa Adams, English teacher at Kellogg Middle School, retirement effective end of the day, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district twenty-three years. Kathy Gronemeyer, grade one teacher, Bishop Elementary, retirement effective end of the day, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district thirty-four years. Catherine Holitz, phys ed teacher at Kellogg Middle School, retirement effective end of the day, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district twenty-six years. And then Cynthia Unger, elementary education teacher, Riverside Elementary. Retirement effective end of the day, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district twenty-two years. Our non-scheduled retirements, Amy Severt, licensed practical nurse at Sunset Terrace. Retirement effective end of the day, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district four years. Grace Stevens, licensed practical nurse at non-public schools, retirement effective at the end of the day, February fourth, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district four years, and then one maintenance retirement. Larry Clocky, grounds equipment operator lead at Facility Service Center, retirement effective end of the day, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Been with the district thirty-four years. We thank all of these individuals for their service to Rochester Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, and thank, thank you to those retirees. Uh, five point zero one, a research request for emotional impacts of COVID nineteen on high school student athletes. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director, Kirkman Instruction. Brenda.
Good evening, and I'm just going to turn this over to, to Mark Queasley, who's the athletic director of Century High School, and he's the one with a couple of researchers bringing this request forward to you tonight.
Thank you. Um, Chair Marvin, Mr. Munoz, and Directors, um, again, it's an honor to be in front of you this evening to talk about this possible study. Um, as I listened to the board meeting two weeks ago, you talked about the so- social emotional learners and how they were adjusting in the academic day. And this is going to actually take a look at our student athletes and how they are doing socially and emotionally as they deal with COVID and this um, the struggles uh, that they have on a daily, weekly, monthly, and now almost yearly basis. So with me this evening is Dr. Gary Garrison and Dr. Dustin Collins, and I believe Emily Garrison is a student of ours at Century High School. And I'm going to ask those three to join me at this time, and I will turn it over to Gary next.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, can everybody hear me okay? I just want to make sure the connection's okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come before the school board uh, tonight and present our proposal uh, to you folks. I think this is an important question in terms of, of how our student athletes are coping with this pandemic. Um, we all know that COVID nineteen has affected our lives in many profound ways, uh, not the least of which is, is on athletics, and it has affected things right down from the Olympics to our ability to go to a gym and workout. Um, high school athletics is a huge part of an adolescent's um, maturation process and uh, social environment during their high school years. And certainly COVID nineteen has affected um, our athletes' abilities uh, to participate in that um, and, and um, have those experiences that, that, that we want them to have. Um, Emily, um, I'm going to turn things briefly over to you. Maybe you could talk a little bit about how you and your teammates um, experienced COVID nineteen this fall playing this sport?
Yeah, sure. So I guess that I would sum up my experience during the fall as a roller coaster because um, I think my teammates and I were very excited to learn we were going to have a season in the fall as we were unsure about it this summer. And there was a lot of COVID guidelines that went into play, mask, social distancing, split practices, virtual meets, just to name a few. And I think my team and I followed those rules to the very best of our ability to have a safe season for everyone involved. Um, unfortunately, despite this effort that we made, we were actually quarantined two weeks before our big nine championship. So the entire team was quarantined before. And since we were not practicing and we weren't able to see each other, I would say that my mental well-being and health was very negatively impacted during that time. I felt disconnected from my teammates. I wasn't able to receive support from my coaches. It was really isolating, I would say. And then later, we were able to have um, our big nine championship and section championship. We were very lucky. Um, but that did conclude our season since the state tournament was canceled.
Thank you for sharing that, Emily. Um, Dr. Collins, I think you're the one that originally approached me with this idea, and I'd like you to present to the board um, kind of what our specific aims and our hi- initial hypothesis was, and then I'll get into specifics about the methodology.
Absolutely. Um, can everybody hear me okay? Great. Thank you very much. Um, so I'm Dr. Collins. Um, I appreciate all of you um, willing to uh, take the time to, to uh, listen to us today. Um, to go into detail specifically, um, specific aims, we, we really want to quantify the social and emotional um, upheaval um, that has been um, caused by our high school athletes. Um, in using a specific emotion questionnaire called the Sport Emotion Questionnaire, um, which measures specific domains, anxiety, dejection, happiness, anger, excitement, um, and able to kind of quantify those for us. Uh, additionally, um, you know, do high school athletes with more COVID nineteen-related disruption um, in their seasonal sport uh, experience more social or emotional upheaval? That's another aim. Um, another aim would be, um, do higher level athletes such as varsity athletes, um, is there more social or emotional upheaval uh, due to the COVID nineteen modifications than maybe a JV uh, athlete? And so really, um, we kind of, our, our main hypothesis that we're trying to drive here is, does increasing disruption caused by COVID nineteen uh, modifications in a high school athlete's sport? Uh, does that cause greater social and emotional upheaval uh, as measured by the Sport Emotion Questionnaire uh, that we would be distributing?
Thank you, Dr. Collins. I think some of the benefits of doing this study are that it, it really helps us kind of quantify how much of that social emotional uh, upheaval our, our student athletes have faced um, during the, during the past year. Um, and I think it also helps the school districts themselves understand which sports and perhaps even which athletic characteristics are associated with, with potentially greater social emotional impact uh, during this, this pandemic. And I'm also hopeful that in the future, uh, this perhaps can be um, used to, to help uh, inform us and, and make good public health um, policy decisions, balancing some of the risks and benefits of, of COVID nineteen and, and participation in athletics and keeping everybody safe. So our methodology for conducting this survey is, is to conduct an anonymous survey of um, the ninth through twelfth grade student athletes, um, in, in this case at, at Rochester Public Schools. We have an online survey that's run through our Qualtrics, um, which is a survey instrument that Mayo has contracted with. Um, it will involve, involve only anonymous uh, data, de-identified data. Um, we will ask the students for their age, their grade, and their high school sport. And then we will ask a series of questions about each sport that they might have played for each season. Those questions will involve things like, uh, what, what squad were they on? Um, were their teammates affected by quarantine during the season? Um, and then some specific questions about their uh, sport-specific performance, and did they meet some of their goals uh, for the season as well? And then finally, uh, as Dr. Collins mentioned, there's a twenty-item um, social emotional um, sports questionnaire that includes uh, questions like, for instance, um, uh, did you feel sad? Did you feel irritable during the season? Those sorts of things. And, and the students uh, respond by ranking their feelings. Our biggest uh, I, I think barrier uh, here with the survey is going to be recruitment. And, and we've been talking extensively uh, with Mark Queasley about this. Um, and he's been a great help to us in terms of both um, uh, revising our, our protocols uh, to match what, what Rochester Public Schools can do as well as um, actually giving us some, I think, very valuable input on the questionnaire itself. So thank you, Mark, for that. Bottom line, what we came up with um, is that the district will send an invite, invitation email out to the parents and guardians of the various student athletes. This will come from the, the contact information when the students registered for their sport. And we're planning to survey all students that register for any Minnesota High School League um, sanctioned event, including uh, some of the adaptive sports and so forth that they exist at your high schools. Um, that email will contain a link to our electronic survey instrument. And that survey instrument will contain the parental consent document that will be read and consented to. And then uh, if parents give consent to, for, um, for their student athlete to participate in the survey, the student athlete will uh, be asked to give asset to participate in the survey, and then the survey will, will commence. We've done some testing on the survey. It takes approximately three to four minutes per sport for the students to do that. Um, we're only collecting aggregated data uh, on the students in a de-identified fashion for this. I think um, uh, there will be two reminder emails that will be sent out at, at two-week intervals um, to increase participation for it. So what are we seeking from you folks today? Um, first of all, approval to conduct the survey. And secondly, partnership in, in actively recruiting student athletes for this. And also a curiosity about the social emotional health of your student athletes and the willingness to um, take the data that we collected and hopefully make things better for our student population. I think that there were a couple of questions that came up today uh, regarding the survey. I thought these were excellent, and I'm very glad to see that somebody else other than us reads these lengthy IRB documents. Uh, so I thought the questions were very insightful, and I'd like to take a moment to answer them before we get to any other questions here. The first question revolved around um, uh, languages and, and making sure that we're inclusive of, of non-English speakers. Uh, we are planning to translate the uh, survey documents, including the email, into other languages. Right now, I believe we've um, specified English, Spanish, and Somali because those are the most common ones in Rochester. If there's some other ones, um, you know, for instance, Arabic that are, are um, prevalent at, at our Rochester Public Schools, we would certainly be open to that. Uh, the Mayo Language Department does the translation and actually certifies it. Uh, and, and Qualtrics actually handles that very nicely on the survey instrument for the consent. It's basically a drop-down uh, box that people could select their language in. So, uh, hopefully that answers that question. The second question, and I thought this was very insightful, um, was regarding a question about race and ethnicity of our student athletes. Um, we, we share, I think, the board's uh, concern that certainly our disadvantaged population has been disproportionately affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, it's something that I unfortunately see every day in my clinical practice. Um, in fact, I think the initial version of our survey included questions on both gender and race and ethnicity of our student athletes. Um, however, when we're conducting anonymous surveys, we want to make sure that we avoid groupings of one uh, for that. And um, we've had some significant discussions amongst the uh, survey group as well as amongst the IRB board. And um, there was concern about these questions potentially getting down to a grouping of one. And there was concern about these questions potentially getting down to a grouping of one. For instance, you know, if we say something like the 10th grade girl soccer player who's also Hmong, well, we probably have a pretty good idea who that person is even without specifying their name. We want to be as inclusive as possible for our minority athletes. And we want them to feel comfortable answering a survey such as this without any repercussions regarding privacy or concerns regarding that. So our group made a very difficult decision because I think we recognized that there is value to asking some of these questions that we didn't feel comfortable including them in our survey for the privacy concerns of our student athletes. And we recognize that that limits some of the conclusions that we can draw from the survey, especially as it pertains to Rochester Public Schools. But we felt it was the right decision because of the balance between sort of the individual risks and the potential tangible benefit of some of the information gained by that. I will say, as I thought about this, this survey is IRB-approved, and we're planning to carry it to other districts as well. And one of the ways that we can still get at the question of, is there a differential experience for some of our disadvantaged youths, is to really look at the different high schools that we send this survey to. And perhaps we can even do things like look at, was the experience different at a different high school that has a different percentage of minority and low-income students? So there are some ways that we can kind of get around some of those limitations, but I recognize that that's a concern, and I would be happy to to speak more with board members about that as well. Were there any other questions or concerns about the study?
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, Dr. Garcia.
Yes, hi, thank you. I just had a couple. So I know that you said that you would be willing to translate into other languages about how should we, as the district, be notifying you of which ones we need?
I think you can just let me know by an email which ones you need, and I'd be happy to do whichever ones are prevalent.
Okay. Well, I also would think that, you know, for example, if an English-speaking student wanted to assent to the participating in the survey, but their parents could not consent because they don't speak English, and that's the only, you know, option, how can we help them let you know that they need, you know, the consent and assent forms in different languages?
Yeah, so there's going to be some contact information with the initial email and with the consent document online, and we would be happy to entertain those questions and send them those documents if they need them in a different language. As I stated, we can do the common ones right through Qualtrics. So that, for instance, the parents can select whatever language is needed for them. And the student can select whatever language is needed for them as well, too, in the survey instrument itself.
Sure. And just another question in terms of the comparison data. So you're saying that you wouldn't be obviously providing any individual data points, but when you're when you're doing the analysis and you're doing the aggregated work, are you going to be doing like Rochester Public Schools versus, you know, whatever other district that you're looking into? Are you going to be doing sports versus sports, or is it really just going to be one sort of big data point of either, yes, this does impact them, and these are maybe the social-emotional categories, or how is that going to work?
I think it's a great question. First off, unfortunately, none of us anticipated the pandemic, so we don't have comparison data from beforehand to go with. So the first portion of our results are going to be simply descriptive. What's the impact for student athletes on this? The second part of it is, yes, we're planning to compare various sports. Various sports were sort of differentially affected by this. Some sports, you know, started late. Some sports had a final season, some sports did not. So we're looking at differences between the sports themselves and how much they were affected, and how that would affect the students' social-emotional ratings. And then you asked also about between school districts. That's another comparison that we can make as well. Especially as we gain more districts into the population here. IRB has approved us to look at all districts in the Mayo in Mayo Health System, Ketchman area, in Minnesota and Wisconsin. So we're hoping to recruit other school districts as well.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes, thank you, Emily, Dr. Gregory, and Collins. You as well, Mark. Couple of quick things. You know, the Minnesota State High School League also is responsible for things such as debate, one-act play, music, to include choir, band, orchestra, speech, robotics, visual arts, dance, jazz, and high kick. And, you know, I thought that, wow, you know, our student athletes aren't the only ones who are engaging in competitive and rigorous efforts that require hard, passion, hours of, if you will, effort on their part. And as I looked at the domains, anxiety, dejection, excitement, anger, happiness, I thought, you know, that could fit any of our students who fall under the banner, if you will, of the services offered by Minnesota State High School League. Was there some particular reason why you chose to maybe focus on student athletes versus student debaters, or students engaged in robotics? Or for the larger group events, orchestra members, band members, choir members? Because they too go through, if not the same thing, similar. I speak firsthand. I was a student athlete. I also played cornet in the band and sang in honor choir. So I, in part, can relate, in part. But I was just curious.
I can take that one. Mr. Barlow, we wanted to focus, number one, on rosters that we currently register with the Minnesota State High School League. So we know our database is very accurate with any high school league-sponsored activity. So speech, debate, robotics will be included in this, as we said, the adapted athletics. The clay target will not be, because that's an independent provider. We would love to include a lot of our activities in a lot of the surveys that we do. But the problem that we have is getting accurate rosters because they don't require a roster to register for a specific activity. So sometimes it's very difficult for us to gather that data, quantify that data because of the looseness within that activity, if that makes sense for you. But in this round, we wanted to specifically focus on the Minnesota State High School League activities that we have that we knew we have an accurate roster on.
Okay, and just to be clear, and I understand the items I did mention are items which fall under the banner of Minnesota State High School League. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. The band, orchestra, and choir are the academic components of our day. And we do have some groups that do some solo ensemble work with the Minnesota State High School League. But this year, the solo ensemble didn't take place. So again, I really don't have a roster to go to those students and find that the data, the SEL we're looking for out of those students.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Workman.
There. Yes. First of all, Dr. Garrison, I would like to thank you for answering one of my questions, which was basically, without a control group, pre-COVID, how do you do the comparison? So you answered that for me. And then this next question also relates maybe to Mr. Queasly. When it was stated earlier that one of the purposes of this research project would be to find out which sports have a greater emotional impact on students, or how they are. So, Mr. Queasly, when the district gets this data, number one, will it be received in time to be able to apply any of this information to what you're currently doing with student athletes?
Well, yes, we're hoping so. I do believe we didn't anticipate COVID lasting almost 12 months now. I think we ceased activities like the 15th of March last year. So we're almost on that one-year anniversary. We are hoping to take a look at this data. We want to share this data back with the board when it is collected to see if there is any significant correlation in a particular sport. I can tell you, in talking to my two colleagues at Mayo and John Marshall, that anytime we lose a competitive team, whether it's for a 10-day or a 14-day window, it's got a huge social-emotional impact on the students and their parents for them. And we know that activities in athletics is a high-energy part of their life. And so we want to try and get these students back on track as quick as we can in these activities, and do it safely. We've stressed all along that we want to make sure we're doing this safely, so.
Okay, and then I have a quick follow-up. I was really, first of all, I did read through all of the attachments that you included with the document. I just did not send my questions in ahead of time. And some of the questions I have, you actually answered, so I've saved you some time with that. I'm really fascinated as to how subjective responses are turned into quantitative data, numbers. And what will you do with this information, aside from giving it to, I'm assuming, the activities directors at the, for the different districts? What plans do you have for this going forward, this project going forward, if any? Is there a practical, is there a practical application from your point of view, other than perhaps to say, you know what? COVID's not good for anybody, which I think we can probably already deduce without this, but thank you.
I think it's a good question. First off, the first part, which is, you know, how do we look at these rather subjective responses to these 20 emotional words? And turn it into something? The social-emotional questionnaire is something that's actually been used in the past with athletes, and it's been validated with respect to athletic competitions. And we're adapting that a little bit for a season instead of a specific competition. But we still think that those results should be valid for the season as well. Each of those individual words gets essentially rolled up into a score for various domains. And be very specific for you here, the various domains are anxiety, dejection, excitement, anger, and happiness. And essentially, a score gets created based on their responses to those questions for each of those five domains. And then what we're doing is looking at how each of those domains' score relates to perhaps how much disruption or the particular sport that that athlete participated in. As for our plans, obviously, we want to share this information to you folks, both to the athletic directors, as well as to the school board. Because I think it's important for the emotional health of our young students to support them through this process. And this may give us some ideas about who is most vulnerable, which sports perhaps are most vulnerable, which activities are causing the most distress for our students. And perhaps we can get them some specific support with that, especially in real time. As Mark mentioned, you know, maybe when we're quarantining a team because they've had some positive cases, we need to step in and and really provide those athletes some support mechanisms that perhaps don't involve being at practice together and group meetings and those sorts of things. I think those are all ideas that we can have to make use of this data and make a positive impact with our athletes. We certainly hope to publicize these results in, obviously, in aggregated fashion, so we're not divulging anybody's answers at all. But we certainly hope that it helps the medical literature out, so it gets spread even further than just the individual school districts that participate.
Thank you. Ms. Nathan.
Thank you, Dr. Garrison, for answering the questions that I sent on such a tight timeframe. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you reflected on making the decision about asking the questions. And you've mentioned a few times that you're going to be able to bring the results back. Do you have a timeframe for how long the survey piece of this is going to take, and then analysis, and then when we might see results?
Yeah. So the survey will be open for six weeks from whenever it starts, and I would anticipate that we could start that relatively soon, probably in March, and to catch our spring athletes with it. And then I would anticipate that our analysis side of that may take another month or two afterwards, so that we can get some aggregated results to you. I certainly would hope that we would be able to do that by this summer, so that we can make some decisions before the the fall athletics start up again in the 2021, 22 school year.
Great, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Hi, Dr. Garrison. Thank you for sharing your information with us. I was interested in some of the language you used about being, having a curiosity about the social-emotional health of students and the discussion of wanting to be inclusive as possible. I guess, I purposely raised my hand last because I was hoping you would tell us this, and I haven't heard it yet. But is there something about, and maybe I missed this from your introduction, but is there something about your background that focuses this just on our student athletes and not on all of our students? I think this survey would be beneficial to get a baseline of all of our students' social-emotional health at this point. I don't know if that's being done in other places of the district. This is the first I'm hearing of this topic, so that's why I'm asking you about that. You know, if we wanted to be completely inclusive, we'd be looking at all of our students and not just student athletes. So I'd be interested in your comments on that. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't disagree. I think all of our students have obviously been affected by COVID-19. And some of these questions certainly would pertain to all of our students. My background is in family medicine, so I care for all kinds of kids in the area. And I see the difficulties that they struggle with, so I don't disagree at all with that. We decided to focus on the student athletes because, mostly because this survey has been validated in that population and not in other populations yet. We needed to narrow our hypothesis down, and that was a concern of ours. And so that was how we ended up with this survey. But I do not disagree that this would be a valuable thing to extend even beyond what we're proposing to do here as well.
Thank you. We've got a
And I'm sorry, just to follow up to that feedback, I did review your documents as well. I didn't see that specifically laid out, so that's what led to my question, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. A few more questions, and then let's keep in mind that our goal here is to determine whether we want to grant this request to do research or not. Dr. Garcia.
Yes, my colleague, Director McLaughlin, I think, kind of took sort of where my brain was going with this also, is maybe this is not so much a question for Dr. Garrison, but perhaps Mr. Munoz or the rest of the board, is why aren't we, or how do we get something like this for the entirety of the student population? I recognize that we wouldn't use, obviously, the same instrument because it's specific to sports, but there are a number of, like, Beck scales that we could use. There are other things that are normed for children, you know, as young as pre-K, all the way through adolescence and early adulthood. And so I, you know, I'm appreciating the opportunity to, you know, have our student athletes participate in this. In addition to, I think, what Director Barlow was saying is, couldn't we also include additional students? But also kind of pulling in what Director McLaughlin was saying is, why wouldn't we be doing this for all of our students? Or how do we get someone like Dr. Garrison to do this for all of our students?
Mr. Munoz, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I would say the only thing that we have right now that's similar would be our Panorama survey that we do two times a year for all of our students. Doesn't get specifically at everything that this particular survey is getting at. And then we have piloted another survey at a couple of schools and have not gotten to a point where we're ready to expand that across the district. That's where we're at right now.
Ms. Workman. Ms. Workman.
Sorry, I forgot to put my hand down.
Oh, okay. Thank you. At this point, this is a briefing item. We could move it to action if that's your will or not.
I'd like to move to action.
Move to action. Nathan, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Barlow, any discussion? Ms. Iverson, will you call, uh, call the roll?
Thank you, Clerk Ammons, Ammonson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item now. Yet resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the research study and survey emotional impact of COVID-19 modifications on high school student athletes. Ammonson moved approval.
Second, Garcia.
Garcia's second. Any discussion? Ms. Iverson.
Thank you, Clerk Ammonson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is approved and thank you, uh, Dr. Garrison and others for your presentation, uh, Mr. Queasley for the work you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Five point oh two, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. This is the APAC Committee. Uh, this is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to the Ju- Julie Ruzek and then she can introduce the members of the Parent Advisory Committee. Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Good evening, Board members. Normally, uh, Regan Clover, our Native American liaison, would be introducing this agenda item. However, she is not able to join us this evening due to the impending arrival of a new little baby. So, you get me. Uh, I am joined this evening by Riley and Laura Randolph. They are both members of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Are you here, Riley and Laura? I don't see you. If you're here, you can go ahead and turn on your, there you are. Awesome. Thank you. Um, let's see, where was I at? You will hear from Riley in just a moment. And Laura is here this evening as a parent representative on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee as well. I also wanted to introduce Laura as she will be filling in for Regan while Regan is away. So thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Minnesota's, what's that? Go ahead.
Oh, I just said very exciting.
Awesome. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Riley in just a second and then it's all yours, Riley. So Minnesota Statute 124D point seven eight mandates the formation of an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. We call it APAC. In Minnesota school districts with 10 or more American Indian students. Rochester Public Schools is one of those districts. The committee is an advisory committee helping to ensure that all students, including our Native American students, are receiving culturally relevant and equitable education. For the same statute, APACs have a duty to file a resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence with the Minnesota Department of Ed on an annual basis. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty one, the APAC, the Rochester APAC unanimously voted in favor of non-concurrence. If the vote is one of non-concurrence, the parent committee must also provide written recommendations for improvement to the school board. At this time, all yours, Riley. Riley is a student at Century High School and, as I mentioned before, a member of the APAC Committee. She will be reading uh the APAC Committee's letter of recommendations to the board.
All right, thank you very much. Dear members of the School Board of ISD number five through five, we, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, APAC, of Rochester Public Schools, our PS, serve in an advisory role to the district in accordance with the Minnesota Department of Education's Indian Education statutes, as well as the use of Department's of Education's Title VI Indian Education Formula Grant Program. We work to ensure all American Indian students are receiving an equitable and culturally relevant education based on these students' unique cultural, language, and academic needs. As part of our responsibilities, we evaluate the progress of our students and the district's work in fulfilling the provisions of the Indian Education Program. This is our annual resolution of our decision of concurrence, non-concurrence. We would like to acknowledge the support RPS has provided throughout our existence as a committee. We feel we are well established and are progressing towards our goals. We also recognize the unique challenges brought on by the pandemic at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year and of this 2020, 2021 school year. This year has tested us and stressed us, stretched us as parents, educators, and learners. Through no one's fault, we have had to adapt our educational targets as we have been unable to provide services and supports as we have in the past. With these circumstances in mind, the APAC unanimously voted in favor of non-concurrence at our meeting on January thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The APAC has identified three areas of greatest concern based on data available to us, including the MD Office of Indian Education's District and School Self-Assessment for Implementing Indian Education Instrument, District Attendance Evaluation and Discipline Data, and District, and District Sa- and District Staff Data. The areas we wish to focus on include, one, recruitment and retention of American Indian staff; two, collaboration, communication, and professional development; three, student learning, standards, curriculum, and instruction. Recruitment and retention of American Indian staff. The APAC recommends an increase in staff for our Indian Education Program and recommends an increase in American Indian educators across the district. Of the 2,733 total staff in the 2020, 2021 school year, RPS has had 51 non-white teachers, 3.44% and 207 non-white staff, 7.57%. Included in the non-white staff count, 14 people have identified themselves as American Indian, making up just 0.5% of the total RPS staff population. Knowing that the RPS student population is approximately 41% non-white, this vast difference is disconcerting. This is a particular concern of our American Indian students. We again urge RPS to make every effort and beyond those tripped in past years to hire and retain American Indian staff. We are highly appreciated, highly appreciative of Regan Clover, the American Indian Liaison, and those staff who support her position. However, she cannot adequately address all the needs of our American Indian students, much less support all teachers, classes, and curriculum across the district. Additional staff are needed to support language and culture initiatives, curriculum alignment, professional development, and college and career exploration. Collaboration, communication, and professional development. The APAC recommends the continuation of professional development for RPS staff on American Indian history, culture, and curriculum. Our recommendation includes baseline information for all and each year for new staff, advanced training for those working directly with American Indian students, classroom teachers, administrators, counselors, social workers, and paraprofessionals. The professional development sessions that have been offered by Regan Clover and others have been a positive step forward. We are concerned, however, that these sessions are usually one choice among many and not required. We advocate that all staff be expected to learn about the American, the American Indian history and culture to be more effective in working with our students. Student learning, standards, curriculum, and instruction. APAC recommends a review of all preschool through 12 curriculum for American Indian cultural appropriateness. This would include resources available in district libraries and classrooms. We do celebrate the inclusion of the recent elementary Thanksgiving curriculum, the Minnesota Mocoche Dakota Ha- Dakota Homeland's Curriculum for sixth grade, and the ethnic studies classes at the high schools. The APAC looks forward to collaborating with the district on new curriculum projects. In conclusion, we reiterate our understanding of the challenging circumstances we have all experienced this school year. Our non-concurrent statement is our evaluation of the current status of RPS in reaching the targeted goals. After more than a century of schooling designed to strip our people of our cultural history, values, ceremonies, and community, we stand in solidarity to hold our government accountable for the promises made to us in treaties as well as both federal and state legislation. Rochester Public Schools should continue to strive to fulfill those obligations to provide a respectful environment and culturally appropriate education for our children. Sincerely, the RPS American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. In addition to our concurrency letter, APAC would like to express our concern with the processes of naming our new elementary school. The finalist names and how they were chosen were not reflective toward the equitable strides our district is adamant on making. We, the APAC, see this as a missed opportunity to strengthen Rochester Public Schools' relationship with its American Indian community and further its relationship to the land it resides on, which is the ancestral land of the Dakota people who were forcefully removed from this area only generations ago. In closing, we hope to be considered for future conversations surrounding the naming of sites, as it is our belief, our buildings should embody our mission statements and the students' discernment. Thank you.
Riley, let me say on behalf of the school board, you did an amazing job of presenting uh in a, a, a very intelligent, reasonable manner of three important concerns that you and, and your community has. Uh, we need to hear those. Uh, we appreciate the direction that you're giving this district and uh we have re- remain committed to continuing to work with you and with others uh to make this district better. So thank you for that. Thanks also for mentioning the school naming thing because we're gonna be speaking soon about how we're gonna be naming the new middle school. So you sort of, that was an icebreaker there, but you did a great job. Thank you very much. Questions or comments, Board members?
Can I finish with one little segment before we take some questions? Thank you, Chair Marvin. Uh, thank you so much, Riley. I, I echo what Chair Marvin just said. Um, you are just one of our amazing students that was represented tonight and I am proud to know you and grateful for your voice here in this space and every month at our APAC meetings as well. So excellent job. Um, I wanted to remind the board that Minnesota State Statute 124D point seven eight, as I mentioned before, subdivision two, requires that the school board, in cases of non-concurrence, respond in writing within 60 days to each recommendation made by the committee. Both letters are subsequently submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education by our Native American Liaison, Regan Clover, and we will figure out a way to do that in her absence as well. This and other APAC information can also be found on the Minnesota Department of Ed website. And with that, thank you so much for your time and we will entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you. Wow. Uh, oh, uh, Dr. Garcia.
Yes, I, I also wanted to say thank you, Riley. You did a phenomenal job. Um, I think my, my question is more of a procedural one for us. So does this mean now that we are gonna have an additional meeting or add this as an, as an item on another meeting to figure out how we would respond to each of these items that they've identified in the non-concurrence? Or is that something that the chair and the vice chair take care of?
I can address that. Yeah, our practice has been that the uh district administration work on the response and then we will bring that response back to the board for formal approval and any adjustments that the board uh would like us to make on that response. We do have 60 days from today to, to submit that response to the state. So we will be working on that and then bring it at a future board meeting uh to have further discussion with the board on that, on our response to the three uh, three areas.
Thank you. I just, I just want to make it known that I, I'm hearing all of the recommendations loud and clear and I hope that we can make um, you know, provide some responses that will help move us forward.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Barlow.
Uh, yes, I hope Riley still is there. I just wanted to comment. I think our students, when given the opportunity to um stand up and to uh acknowledge and communicate who they are, uh, they always fully demonstrate who they are. Uh, I'm not surprised and, and we, of course, should expect this out of all of our students. And so I just wanted to say, uh, Riley, you know, um, you've set the bar for other students as well. And I just, you know, would like to encourage you to continue using your voice and taking advantage of the opportunities uh to represent and to be confident in your communication. Thank you.
Riley, I sure hope you're listening. Uh, Ms. Nathan. Oh, you are lis- good for you.
So um, in addition to thanking Riley for the great job that she did, Julie, I'd like you to pass on our thanks to the um, the advisory committee because I, I know that they're uh organized through state statute and there are certain uh criteria they have to follow. But I really think that um in all the presentations that have come to the board from APAC, we've seen how um community engagement can really work, where you have individuals who really dig deep into the policy area and the curricular area um that they're responsible for and bring really relevant recommendations back to the board about how uh things can improve for the students that they serve. So um, I, I always look to APAC as a great model for, for that kind of community engagement and I hope to see that we can bring that to other students and other student populations in the future.
Thank you. Again, um, all of you, thank you so much for this. It's great information and we really do look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Moving on, uh, seven point oh one. This is a referendum update. It's an information item. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott Sheridan, Secretary Director of Operations, and he will uh provide his information for us tonight. Scott.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board members. Tonight is the fourteenth referendum update. And I have with me tonight, uh, Keon McWaters from Knutson Construction. He's part of the CMA that we've hired. Uh, also with him will be Tyler Lenzner, who's in charge uh from Knutson, who's in charge of the pool project. And uh, there, there, Keon is gonna provide you an update on the schedule and executive summary of the projects. And then after he's done, Dana Halibcheck from WSN Architects, who are the architects for the pool, will be here to do a presentation on uh where we're at with the pools. And again, Tyler Lenzner will be there for that. Uh, also, I also have Kevin Holm here, I believe, tonight and Jason Woodhouse. Uh, Kevin's from LHB and Jason's from CRW. They're architects that um are designing the new buildings. So if there's any questions on the new buildings, I'll be here to answer those questions as well. So I think we'll start off with Keon with his presentation regarding schedule updates and executive summary.
Okay, thank you, Scott. We decided we'd show up with a party tonight. Um, moving right into the board update, um, I assume everyone can see my screen. We have the high level master schedule up here. Um, just working right down at the 2019 elementary school. On top, we are just about exactly halfway through construction. Um, in just under six months, we are scheduled to turn that building over to the district for move-in and preparing for the 20- for move-in and preparing for the 2021 school year. With the cold weather that we've had in the last week, we have lost a couple of days in our schedule. We're already working on corrective action plans. I don't anticipate this being any major concern that would impact the end date at all, but we will have to shift around and resequence some things to keep on track. The middle school project, really the same update there. When pouring concrete, you can't do anything when it doesn't get above zero degrees. And so, every day that it's been cold for really the last seven working days, we have not had anybody on site. We are scheduled to resume work again on tomorrow, actually, and then hopefully be pouring concrete again by the end of the week. We were fortunate enough at the middle school that we capitalized on a lot of really nice days through November and December. So, really, this doesn't impact the overall schedule on the middle school at all. Harriet Bishop Elementary School, bids are all received for that. The final package to award is the mechanical plumbing and HVAC package that we'll be bringing to you later tonight. With that, we are working on issuing contracts, working through clarification items, and will be working on material procurement for really the next four months until school ends in June. Immediately following that, we'll begin abatement of hazardous materials in the building and demolition of the existing building. The Longfellow Elementary School, the final bid package is due, will be in on Thursday of this week, actually. So, that's the last of a total of eight bid packages that went out for the four new schools. So, this is a huge milestone for everybody involved in the projects and really the district as a whole. At that time, we're going to be able to get a really clear picture on where our budget sits for the remaining projects. We'll be bringing those bids forward at the March second school board meeting. And that job will actually break ground in April, depending on weather. Scheduled for April twelfth and usually we can by that date. These cure entry projects, we have three projects slated to be finished yet this summer, the three high schools. We are still holding a placeholder in the budget and the schedule for Fidel. That project is on hold until the district knows exactly what they're going to do with that building. The Century Pool Project design began again in December and is ongoing. As Scott mentioned, you'll be receiving a schematic design update tonight from Dana at WSN. Not shown on the schedule, we're planning to issue an early bid package for pre-casts for that building. Pre-cast lead times are sixteen weeks right now, so we want to get that released so it doesn't impact our overall schedule. The remainder of the project is scheduled to bid at the end of April. The Mayo Pool and Middle School Pools are largely unchanged, focusing on the Century Pool right now and, but the construction actually being quite a ways down the road, will shift into design once Century is complete, Century Design is complete. Moving into the budget schedule dashboard here, 2019 Elementary School, this budget, that's a firm number now, thirty-three million, forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. That does include a construction contingency and, but that'll be our target dollar at the completion of the project. As I mentioned, the cold has slowed us down a little bit. We're about a week behind where we feel we should be, but we are coming up with plans to correct that. The new middle school is a budget of fifty-six million, four-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. This is based on the bids received in December, several clarification items that we've gone through, a couple alternates, and we're about ninety-nine percent to having that budget finalized. I actually expect it'll come down a little bit and we should be able to present that at the next board meeting. Longfellow Elementary, this is based on, this is a budgetary number at this point in time. Again, final bids will be back on Thursday. We should be able to firm that number up at the next board meeting as well. And Harriet Bishop, this is very, very close to a final number. We need to get the HVAC and plumbing contractors awarded hopefully tonight and then we can move into clarification phase with them and finalize this budget as well. Pool projects, this is based, the budget of fourteen million, three-hundred-six thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars is based on the schematic design that Dana will be presenting tonight. Keep in mind that that does include the Mayo Pool renovation and decommissioning of the three middle school pools. Security upgrades unchanged from last month. Auditorium project is complete and still holding a land purchase budget of one-point-six-five million. What this does at the bottom, we're at a hundred-and-eighty million, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Approved referendum amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-point-nine million, putting us at six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars under the approved referendum budget. And we do still have a estimated contingency of about one-point-two million. And just remember, we reduce that as we bid projects out. So, we'll reduce it again after Longfellow bids and the pools bid. Always I have a few pictures for you. This is a picture at the elementary school. You're actually standing in the A Wing. It's a classroom wing, standing in the main corridor, looking into what would be a classroom. Masonry walls are ongoing and I think we have one course of masonry block to lay yet and then it'll be a jipboard wall above that. Another picture at the elementary school, this is of steel decking going down over steel bar joists. Here's a photo in the same area after the decking is complete. If you look around the perimeter of the roof, you can see that the perimeter roof protection's been installed so that workers can safely install the roofing material, which is what you see stacked up on the white pallets on the left-hand side. And here is a photo in the stairwell of one of the beams that was included in the beam signing that took place a couple of weeks ago. If you tilt your head and look close, you can see Senator Carla Nelson's signature. Moving to the middle school, more exciting pictures of concrete being poured. This is the classroom A Wing, so you're looking at the, out the northwest side of the school. And then the last picture I have for you is of that tall wall I showed you last time. The majority of the wall's been poured now and waterproofing's going on and will begin backfilling very, very soon. With that, before I turn it over to Dana, I'll open it up for questions on anything that I just shared or anything else you may have.
Board members, if you have questions, including your wanting to share your excitement about poured concrete, as Mr. McWaters has mentioned, just go ahead. Ms. Nathan?
Hello, Keon. I have a question on the pool projects. So, of that fourteen million, is, is, are we at a point where you can break out how much of it is allocated to the Century Pool Project versus the Mayo Project versus the middle school projects?
We do have it broke out. I can break that number out going forward if that's something you would like to see.
That would be, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
And one question about the beams.
Yes.
I'm assuming they will be encased in walls and, and never seen again for perpetuity?
Your maintenance staff may see them again, but yes, they will be concealed by ceilings.
Great. Thanks for that opportunity to, to do that signing. It was fun.
You bet.
Other questions for Mr. McWaters? All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll ask Dana to pull up his presentation and walk you through the schematic design of Century Pool.
Thank you.
There we go. I'll turn my mic on. That helps in a presentation. Okay, everybody can see my screen? Right?
No, we can't, Dana.
No, we can't. All right, one second, please.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again. Thanks, Scott, and thanks, thanks, Keon, for the introduction. My name is Dana Liebichek. I'm the project architect for the Rochester Century Pool Edition, the Mayo Project, as well as the, the middle school decommissioning. This is our second meeting with this group or with, with the school board in, in the past month. The first meeting, we reviewed our meeting agendas and the, the teams, the both internal and external teams that we met with, starting about a year ago in February, March and April, and then more recently in January and February. This is your design team. Mac England is the project manager in the top left. That's me in the bottom left. Our pool consultant is Tom Schaefer with US Aquatics and Keiko Leach is the lead mechanical and electrical engineer for the project. As you're aware, the, the pool addition will be located on the north side, or maybe you're not aware. I think this is the first time we've shown some graphics to you. When we explored options for locating the pool, we looked at just about every side and corner of Century High School to, to locate the addition. We looked at the impacts of circulation, utilities, security, access. A lot of different variables went into this discussion and how we broke that down. We ended up locating the pool and I'll just put my cursor right there, just on the north side of the cafeteria, adjacent to the existing gymnasium, gymnasiums on the, on the northwest, northwest corner, the west corner of the gym. There's a site plan. We'll be modifying the road on the north side. The dark gray is the, the new road and access to the loading dock here on the south. This curved fixture right here, this is the existing cafeteria. We're leaving that component as it is and then we'll be removing the, the concrete plaza between the cafeteria and the swimming pool or the natatorium. That component will be removed and replaced. So, our link to the school will be right next to the existing cafeteria. Here's a first floor plan of that, of the pool. The existing exterior doors and right here, right where my cursor is, so the components that we're adding is just north of these doors and then including, of course, the pool, the natatorium, pool equipment in the locker rooms as well, the gymnasiums. These are the existing gymnasiums here and that's an existing wall that will remain. The pool features an eight-lane, twenty-five-meter swimming pool. We'll, we will be able to seat three-hundred-and-twenty-five spectators in the stadium seating. I'll show you the second level of that here in just a second, but the first level of seating is, is right where my cursor is on the east side of the pool. The, the multi-gathering or multi-use gathering spaces between the locker rooms and the swimming pool or the natatorium. The natatorium is this, this area here where the pool is. So, when I refer to that, I'm referring to the, this, this large area here. The gathering space is located between the locker rooms and, and the, and the natatorium and I'll explain a little bit more about that in the next slide. One component of this project that was, that was required in, in, well, last spring due to building codes was incorporating a storm shelter in the construction of the building. The storm shelter is required to, to hold all of the spectators as well as the athletes in the event of a major storm event. That, I'll back up one second. Here we go. So, that, that storm shelter, where we identified that is within the box of the multi-use room right here in the front as well as the locker room. So, this, this component of the building is designed specifically to withstand a, a large or major storm event if this part of the building were to come down. So, there we show that multi-use space or that space between the locker rooms and the natatorium to the north. We have coaches' offices, locker rooms, two separate locker rooms, and then a special education or special ed, adaptive athlete locker room and shower facility. The two locker rooms combined host about a hundred lockers, little over a hundred lockers with handicap accessible and ambulatory toilets and showers. The mechanical room is located within the storm shelter. This, again, is a code requirement to allow fresh water and air within the storm shelter for a period of time in the event of a large or major storm event. The second level, which we'll show here, this is, this, this is the second level of the seating. This, this is above, obviously above the first level on the east side of, of the building. So, this would allow us to access the natatorium. I'm going to back up one more. Access the natatorium from the corridor. So, if you're a spectator, you would come into the natatorium right here and then from there you would either use an elevator to get up to handicap seating or the stairs so you would not have access to the, the main pool deck. The athletes have their separate entrance off of the main corridor. They could come in, use the locker rooms. Use the locker rooms, come into the multi-use space. This could be a gathering space before tournaments or events and then go from there directly into the natatorium. This is a section through the natatorium with the swimming pool, obviously here. We're just basically just showing this graphically so you can see how the stadium seating is related to the swimming pool and we'll have the raised first level seating is approximately three foot eight inches above the pool deck. Beneath the second level or the second tier of seating, we'll have a mechanical rooms, pool, equipment room, storage, things like that. And we have approximately ten feet from the top level up to the bottom of the existing, bottom of the new structure, which is adjacent to the existing structure within about a foot to a foot and a half. Current project schedule, Keon touched on this briefly. What I don't show are the two separate bid packages. Keon had mentioned a bid package number one, which is due on March fifteenth. That bid package specifically addresses, addresses a pre-cast, as Keon had mentioned, but also bar joists, our excavation and our below slab excavation. You have a high rock table, bedrock, right at this corner of the building and we need to identify the level of rock and the amount of excavation early in the process so we can account for that during excavation and demolition before we start construction. So, those early bid package will be in May and then the following bid package number two would be later, later this spring. You can see that, or that dashed red line is about where we're at right now. So, we're into schematic design, moving through design development and then into construction documents shortly with the first bid package. And that's, that's my, that's my presentation. Is there any questions at this time?
Dana, this is Scott. If you could just go to the drawing of the pool again and explain to the board where the diving well is and the diving boards?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right. Sorry about that. I didn't, I actually don't have those graphically shown on here. The, the shallow end of the pool is, is adjacent to the locker room. So, it, it's, it's highly recommended in this pool design community to allow the, the shallow end of the pool, right where the, the athletes come out of the locker room. So, the shallow end is here. The diving well is on the north side and then those, what you see, those little blocks are the starting blocks. The, the diving boards would be between, between those starting blocks then.
Thanks.
Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Nathan?
Thank you. So, throughout this project, even from the time when we were first doing the referendum estimates, we had a very active community involved in swimming in Rochester who were expressing their ideas and hopes for what, what this pool would be. And we've, we've recently received additional communication comparing our plan to plans in other communities who recently built pools like Sibley and Lakeview and they're comparing what this model is to what they believe is a, a better model in those locations. Can you outline why the choices were made to, to design the pool the way that you have and, and what compromises we may have had to make either because of budget or because of layout or because of location? Just to clarify the, the choices that the, the, the design team made?
Maybe I can start to answer that, Kathy, and then I'll probably hand it off to Dana to talk about some of the design features. But the approved referendum amount was, and don't quote me, it was nine-point-six million, I believe, for the pool and that needed to construct a new pool at Century, needed to remodel the Mayo High School Pool and decommission three other pools. Many of the pools that you mentioned are in that nine-million-dollar range. Several of them were constructed several years ago. So, you need to take inflation into account and add in the other projects that we're trying to complete under this same umbrella. We've been fortunate that we've been able to bring in the new schools under budget to date and we've been able to shift some dollars to get closer to what the pool community has been requesting, but we're, we're not going to be able to get all the way there with the funds that are available. funds that are available to us. Dana, do you maybe want to talk about some of the features?
Sure. You know, if you recall back, and I think it was in January, when the last time I presented, we went through the list of user group meetings, and at that time, if you recall, and I could pull that back up if you'd like to review it, but we had sat down originally with the coaches, or I'm sorry, the first meeting was with the swim community, and it was parents, it was the rec programs, it was the coaches, it was people within, and even swimmers within the swim community engaged in that first conversation. The second one was with the coaches and the public school coaches, and the coaches that would be using this at Century and from Mayo. Then we went back to the swim community for would be user group meeting number two, and then user group meeting number three, which was about two weeks ago, was again with the coaches, the special ed or the adaptive program coaches. So based off of the first, I guess, you're asking about specific design questions, you know, we had started with, I believe it was, Keon, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were actually at a 10-lane pool with a separate dive well, and then from that, the design evolved into 10 lanes, or I'm sorry, eight lanes with the dive well and then a movable bulkhead. And then when we started looking at some of these numbers, we had to scale the project back. Now, keep in mind, one component that was added to this project, which was not originally estimated, was that storm shelter. I touched on that briefly, but the cost of that storm shelter to withstand straight-line winds of a tornado or a major tornado event did increase the cost of the building, and Keon can discuss that, especially the cost specifically. But the construction, the design of that storm shelter, which was required, I think it was added to the code, I think in April or May of last year, I can't remember exactly when it was, but that was not anticipated in the original design, so that had to be taken into account. So when we add features like a storm shelter and the mechanical systems that support it, we have to look at, how does that impact the budget, and maybe what do we have to lose now because of that? So there had to be a give and a take as far as some of the features that we wanted and some of the features we were allowed to get because of the budget restrictions, keeping in mind that we had, you know, we have five pools we have to touch here during this process. So there was a lot of input between the users, the swim community, the coaches, the athletic directors, and I think in every meeting, we've had the athletic directors from both Century and Mayo in almost every user group and internal facilities meeting, and they've given their input as well. So it's been a process going back almost a year when we started that design process. So I don't know if I answered your question or not. That was kind of rambling.
I think it's also important to note, Kathy, that design meetings will continue, and the group has been narrowed down to Rochester Public Schools, swim coaches, and special education teachers to make sure that this facility has everything that Rochester Public Schools needs for their day-to-day uses.
Can I just ask one follow-up question, and this just might be a pie-in-the-sky thought, but once we build this pool and we make the decision about the number of lanes and whether we have a separate dive well and the number of diving boards, there's never an option to expand it in the future, right? It's, this is the pool, and this is the way it's going to be in perpetuity.
We'll never say never, but it would be very costly to add on to the pool.
Okay.
Ms. Amundson?
I want to know about the permanence of our decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Amundson?
So it's kind of a two-part question, and the second part is more for the superintendent or cabinet, I think, but the first part would be the ability to have both swimming and diving taking place at the same time would require an extra 10 meters, I think I was told, to be added to a standard-size pool, and that this could result in additional revenues for Rochester Public Schools in allowing other groups to use our facilities. So the first question is, is that type of extended size included in this design, and if not, you know, how much extra does that add? And then the second part would be if we're needing to find more funds for that storm shelter, I mean, if we're diverting funds away from the original pool design for the storm shelter, would we be able to use more of the health and safety types of funds? And forgive me if I'm massacring my understanding of our finance rules, Mr. Carlson or Mr. Sheridan, but would it be reasonable for us to find other sources for something like that so that we would be able to get the pool that we originally budgeted for?
Dana, do you want to take the question on the dive well?
Yeah, actually, we had looked at that, multiple options of both going wider and longer with the dive well and a movable bulkhead. And yeah, you're absolutely correct. Expanding the pool to the north would accommodate an additional diving well with a movable bulkhead, and that is, that's a good option in lieu of having a separate dive well and a swimming pool where you can keep the pool temperature the same between the two. When we looked at that option, so there's a couple ramifications with that. First, if we expand the building to the north, you can see, here's the driveline as it is, the new driveline, the existing driveline is ghosted behind there, so we'll be demoing out and we'll be going into those fields. There's the existing one, and the new pool and the new driveline push up into these athletic fields. The further we expand that to the north, which we can, the further we have to move that road and would probably, well, it would impact the use of these pools or the fields to the north. But when we added the additional square footage of the water and the diving well, the building extended, well, it'd be about another 30 feet to the north. Again, when we looked at cost, cost per square foot, we were already over at that point, so we had to bring this back, and those decisions were made back in March or April as to the extent of the pool and the number of lanes as well as diving. I can't answer the health and safety funds, those sources. I think Scott would have to address that.
Yeah, we have very limited health and safety funds. I don't have a direct answer for you. I don't know if John Carlson can help me on that one, but I'd have to defer to John on that one.
Generally, health and safety or long-term facility maintenance, it's really the same thing, is meant to repair or replace something. It's not for a new construction like this. So I think we'd have to look at trying to take some money out of the general fund, operating capital, which we don't have much of, or I hate to even say it, but go out for another referendum to put more funds to it.
Well, didn't we have a security, safety portion of the referendum? I assume we spent all of that, or it doesn't qualify?
It all goes into the same fund, the referendum dollars. I mean, the number that Keon is showing, the 14 million, I believe he said, is 5 million more than what's originally allocated for the pool, and that extra 5 million, it was drawn from the savings that we've had by being under budget on our school projects.
Gotcha.
And we haven't brought forth the emergency notification systems yet because we're still getting bids and reviewing those, and so I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but those seem to be coming in significantly higher than what we had budgeted for. So we might have to make some adjustments on those as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? I see no other questions. Mr. Sheridan?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Kevin Holm or Jason Woodhouse regarding any other projects?
Ms. Nathan has a question.
Yeah, I have one more question about the pool. I guess, not talking about the structural design because it's a graphic, but can somebody tell me in operational terms what not having that separate dive well, how does it limit us in terms of our ability to serve our swim athletics teams and meets and those kinds of things? What do we not get to do if we don't have a separate well?
I'll start off that one. Our other two high school pools don't have a separate dive well, so that means the diving competition takes up, usually is at the beginning, and then after the diving competition is done, they remove the boards and then they start the actual rest of the competition. So as far as operating, it'll be operating just like our other two high school pools as far as during the competition itself. I don't know if originally, when we earmarked the dollars amount for the pool, that we were ever even thinking of a separate dive well for the pool. I know that was the wishes of some of the swim community, and I didn't attend those meetings, but my understanding that we were, you know, we suggested that they could come up with some additional funding. We could maybe look at, you know, giving them the type of design that they would prefer, but it all gets down to, we only have a certain set of money designed for the pools, and the fact that we were able to save money on the building projects, we're able to, you know, dedicate some, a few million dollars from those into the pool projects to even do the design that was shared with you tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from anyone? All right, thank you. Mr. Sheridan, you have anything else that you or others want to cover?
Not for the referendum update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on and try to do a couple more items, and then we'll take a quick break. So we'll go on to 7.02 approval of proposal for heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and plumbing for new Harriet Bishop Elementary School. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this agenda item. Scott?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members, again. I also have with me Keon McWaters from Knutson Construction, a name well-known to you, and this is to seek approval of the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, we call it HVAC, and plumbing for the new Harriet Bishop School. If you remember back, not that long ago, on February 2nd, you approved 28 bid packages and five best value packages for the Bishop Elementary to the amount of over almost $23 million. At that time, we had already received the bids for HVAC and plumbing, but as I stated at that board meeting, we pulled that particular best value item out because when we did receive the bids, it came in higher than what our projected budget was. We needed time to parse through it, to decide what discrepancies might be in there as far as savings we could make or to determine if we missed anything as to why it was, it came in higher than what it did. So during the week of February 2nd, we reviewed all this, and then we did an interview with the HVAC companies that we moved forward into the interview process, and we use these as best value again. As you know what our best value process is, we blind rate the risk assessment value adds and team expertise of each of the firms, and that's completed by facility staff or construction services. Knutson Construction's with us on this during the interview process. They don't score in the interview, but they do assist us through the interview process. And the purchasing manager with the district is the one that is the gatekeeper for all the scoring. We conducted interviews on February 2nd with the HVAC firms, and out of all of, out of those interviews, DMC Plumbing was rated the highest best value, and their cost proposal So I'm willing to take any questions. Keon and I can take questions on this.
I am not seeing a lot of questions about heating, ventilation, or air conditioning for some reason. This is a briefing item. Better now than later to have it approved, or can this wait?
If we could move it to action, that would be very helpful to bring it back in line with the other bid packages we did on the 2nd of February.
Ms. Amundson?
So my memory is poor, but I'm trying to remember from a couple of years ago when the, was it a chiller that was upgraded or installed at Harriet Bishop, and we talked about whether or not that would be able to be reused or repurposed in some way? Do you share my memory? Is there any way to incorporate that? I mean, I know the bids are out. Have we thought about it since then, I guess, is my question?
Yes, I've been bringing it forth to the architect every time I, every chance I get because we did, you were absolutely correct, Director Amundson, that we did bring this forward, and with the idea that, with the hope of being able to salvage some of the equipment out of Bishop before we demo it, the new equipment that we put in for the HVAC or for the dehumidification project that we did. And we do plan to take those, three of those, I believe it's three, Keon, three of those units out?
I think it's six, actually, but...
Maybe six, okay. And to keep them, to see if we can reutilize them at another time. I'm not saying that they're going to go into the new building. I don't believe that's the plan, and Jason, if he's still here, he could describe what the plan is for that, but we have talked about it, and I do, like I said, I do bring it up every time that we discuss Bishop. Keon will attest to that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Scott's spot on there. Those units did not feasibly fit into the design of the new school. We have asked the contractors that bid on the new school to include in their bids the cost of disconnecting those units and transporting them to a housing facility at the district.
Thank you. Ms. Workman?
Yes, if there are no other questions, I would like to move this to action.
Second, Amundson.
Been moved and seconded to become an action item. Any discussion? Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow? Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLafflin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
It's now an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the best value proposal for HVAC and plumbing for the new Bishop Elementary School in the amount of $4,299,000.
Move approval, Amundson? Second, Workman?
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Iverson?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLafflin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan? Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Workman, don't leave us. Hang in there. Michelle, you're doing it, but just take care of yourself. Okay, 7.03, Jam Design Approval Architectural Engineering Firm for Design of Indoor Air Quality Project. This is a briefing item. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will brief us on this agenda item as well. Scott?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, board members. I'm seeking tonight the approval of the architectural engineering services for the John Marshall High School Indoor Air Quality Project. I have with me as well Keon Knutson from Construction, Knutson Construction, and if you remember on... And if you remember on January 20th, no, January 19th, at the school board meeting, you approved Knutson Construction to be the construction manager agent for this project. And that's why he is here. This project is part of our 10-year or long-term facility maintenance plan. It's been in the works for quite a while and this is a huge project that's going to take two summers at least to complete. It's a $32.7 million project. And what it entails is the installation of dehumidification equipment, replacement of mechanical units, upgrades of the electrical and plumbing systems throughout the building. And John Marshall, as you know, is a very large building, almost 350,000 square feet. So that's why it's going to take so much time and so much money to do. And since we hired Knutson Construction as the CMA, the next day we put out a request proposal for professional services for the architectural and design. We signed it to the three firms that we work with fairly regularly because it is a professional service. But we just wanted to provide all three of those firms an opportunity to participate in the RFP. We decided to use the best value process to score it. On February 9th, we received proposals from two firms. And the members of the facility department, as you know, we independently rate it, the team qualifications and the project assessment portions of each of the firm's proposal. It's a little different best value this time around, being as it's a professional service, we only utilize those two areas. And the rating scores again were managed by the purchasing manager. And then on February 10th, we interviewed the two firms. It turns out that we put it out to three, but we had two. And the reason we had two is because two of the firms decided to join together again. This is LHB and CRW. And we interviewed another firm as well. And through the best value process, the CRW-LHB firm rated the highest when the scores were tabulated. And their proposal for the A&E design for the JM project is $1,801,500.
Questions or comments, Board members? Once again, briefing item.
Move to action, Nathan.
Second, Workman.
Been moved and seconded to action, any discussion? Ms. Iverson, will you call the vote, please?
Thank you, Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLoughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the proposal from CRW-LHB for $1,801,500 for the architectural and engineering design services of the John Marshall Indoor Air Quality Project.
Move approval, Workman.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Ms. Iverson.
Thank you, Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLoughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Can do one more before taking a break? Are we good with that? Because this is an exciting one, approval to transfer real property. And this is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Business and Finance will brief us on this agenda item. John?
Yes, thank you very much. This one is exciting because this is the culmination of a 30-year project. Board somewhere around 30 years ago said, let's buy some land for a future school in Northwest Rochester. And they did that jointly with the city. What part of the process never got finished, though? It was held for 30-plus years in the name of the city with an agreement that had been recorded, of course, that said that school district gets rights to half of that land. And at some future time, we'll decide which half it is and we'll move forward on building a school there. So we're at that point now. It has been subdivided 50-50 approximately. And the school, of course, you know, is already under construction. So it's been on my list of things to do to push everyone along and get this thing legally separated and closed. So that's what we're asking to do. The lawyers suggested that we run this through the school board and authorize the clerk and the chair to go ahead and go to closing and get this done. There's no fees or no purchase price that needs to be paid. Obviously, we paid for the land in 1990. There are some legal fees, of course, to record it and get it split up.
Mr. Carlson, you said that the land was split 50-50. I'm assuming that the school district got the better half, right?
Yes, I believe we got the better half.
Okay, let's go with that. Questions, Ms. Workman?
Actually, I think we got the better half since the school is already under construction. So I hope the city is not going to try to reverse its decision. I'm jesting.
And again, this is a briefing item.
I'll move it to action.
Second, McLoughlin.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Iverson.
Thank you, I'm sorry, who moved it to action?
Workman.
Thank you. I had my eyes down on the paper. Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLoughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item now. Be it resolved, the School Board for the district hereby authorizes the transfer of the property and directs its chair and clerk to sign and record the quitclaim deed. That's what it's called, John? Quitclaim deed, okay.
That's correct.
Deed.
Move approval.
Second, Amundson.
It's been moved by Workman, seconded by Amundson. Ms. Iverson.
Thank you, Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLoughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now it is 8:08 and we will take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:18. We are on item 7.05, enrollment projections. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Business Finance will provide this information for us tonight. John?
All right, good evening again. I'm here to give an annual report on enrollment projections. It was just about a year ago when we gave the last one. And I guess I can say we've never been this wrong before. So usually we had been projecting growth, 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 year after year after year. And this was the first year where we went backwards in enrollment. However, we are in good company, I guess you can say. Every business manager, finance director I've talked to in a public school district in the state of Minnesota and across the country also experienced the same thing with students unenrolling as we've been going through the global pandemic. So I'm going to just take you through the highlights of the report. I provided a full written report and some summary data there in the, in the board docs. But I'll just give you some of the highlights here. So as you can see, we were at 17,646 a few years ago. We climbed up to 18,296 and then this fall, we went down to 17,635. One thing I would note is that is the October 1st number. We actually went up higher on November 1st, December 1st, January 1st. So either we had new people move to town or we had people return to us after choosing a different option initially. What we are projecting going forward, we are trying to be very conservative. We are assuming that some of the students would likely rejoin us when they have a full in-person option again. So we do think we will grow again. And so we've put And so we've put all of our normal formulas and regression and everything together. And we believe we'll be at around 17,00743 this fall and then heading to 17,00909 and then back into the 18,000s. Just in case you're wondering what we are assuming, we are assuming that approximately 25% of the students that unenrolled will return this fall. I'll explain that a little bit later down the road here. Really, we think that a lot of our kindergarten class can be predicted based on going through Olmsted County birth records. Although, one thing to note on here is the trend in births have been going down. And we were below 2,000 again here in the year 2020. But like I had said, our district had been growing even though the number of births had been going down. So that just tells us that people do move to Rochester for employment and other things and bring children with them that had been born elsewhere. This graph just kind of shows a 20-year look back at our elementary numbers and then a 10-year look forward at our elementary predictions. You can see that with the large drop off there, most of our withdrawals or unenrollments happened at that younger level on the elementary level. Because when I show the middle school graph, that was pretty flat compared to how it was before. We did not lose nearly as many middle school kids as we did elementary. And then in high school, we actually picked up kids. So we were growing in the high school age level year over year. I will note, we were talking about this in boundary adjustments, that we have a school next year that's projected to be right around 2,000. That would be Mayo High School. And you can see, we're going to possibly cross over that 6,000 marker in October of '25. So even if we're all fully balanced in our boundaries, we may have 2,000 at all three of our high schools. So again, I don't want to say the R-word, but a referendum for building a fourth high school might be in the cards somewhere out there if we continue to see upward trends in our high school numbers. Just comparing some of the other options. So the top blue line here is the non-public schools in the city of Rochester. Their numbers continued a downward direction even this year. So I'll show you in a minute that they picked up some of our students, but they must have lost more on their own because they were still down year over year. The charter schools have been pretty flat now for a few years in a row. Probably likely because there hasn't been a new charter school that has opened in the last few years. So that lighter blue color line has been flattening out. And then, of course, we saw the yellow line tick up. That's the homeschooling line. And so that one went up because we did see that that was a popular option this fall. Open enrollment, these are looking at the numbers. The top dark blue line are the number of kids that live within our boundaries that have chosen to open enroll to another district nearby. And I say nearby because they would have to be transported there on a daily basis by their parents or some other person. So it's likely Byron, Stuartville, Cassin, Pine Island, Dover. Those are the top ones that we see. But the light blue line tells a story too, that that number keeps growing. And that's the number of kids leaving districts nearby and their parents or somebody else are driving them into Rochester. So we're picking up students. The top four are Byron, Stuartville, Pine Island, and Plainview, Elgin Melville. So the main summary here in our enrollment projections are the basis of our next year's revenue budget. So we are entering into staffing season and budgeting season. So we are going to use these enrollment projections as building the revenue, as the basis for building our revenue budget. Again, birth numbers have been trending downward, but yet our enrollment had been trending upwards. So we know that people are moving to town. And really, because the models assume a lot of the growth in kindergarten is based on birth numbers, it does tend to show that our enrollment flattens out over five years or five years into the future because you're estimating kids born in 2020 would enter school in 2025. Beyond that, it's really hard to make a kindergarten projection because you're talking about people that generally haven't been born at this point. As I mentioned earlier, just we had looked, why did students unenroll or why did they leave our district? And so this was as of, I think, September 1st. It covered most of the student loss that we had. Forty-six percent of the students moved out of the area. So this wasn't just leaving or going to somewhere else just because they could. This means their family packed up their home and moved out of state, out of country. We had out-of-country moves and we had moves that were out of the district boundary. So that was almost half of the reason we lost students. Thirteen percent enrolled in a private school. So thirteen percent of the students that left went to a private school, even though, again, I was saying the private school numbers were down year over year. Thirteen percent chose homeschool, which is not the same as distance learning. So they were choosing as a family, as parents, to be the main provider of the education for their children. Eight percent went to an online school, but not the RPS distance learning option. And six percent went into an open enrollment status into a local district nearby. There are a few other reasons, but they're all 1% or less. So at the end of the day, what we're projecting is a growth of 108 students next year. Again, we presume that that's low because we do think there probably be some people that will return from maybe homeschool or online school or open enrollment or a private school that, you know, may be more satisfied with an all-day in-person option. Our projections up until this last year, where we're about 3% off, have been right within 1%. So another way to frame up our projection is somewhere between 17,566 and 17,920 would be my best guess for our enrollment on October 1st, 2021. So at this point, I'd take any questions we have on enrollment projections.
Ms. Nathan?
Hello, Mr. Carlson. I want to go back to the slide where you talk, and you don't have to put it back up, but the slide where you talk about how it gives the appearance an enrollment may be flat in the medium term of five years. And I think throughout the time of COVID, we've gotten a lot of questions from the community that says, well, if your enrollment is flat or if you're losing students, why do we still need to build all of these buildings? So can we just reiterate for the community the reasons why we're building the buildings and about past growth versus future growth?
Certainly. We're on pace, if we would have done this report last year, to exceed 19,000 students in the not-too-distant future. So we're on a path of growth. We expect that the community, because of everything that's being promoted with Destination Medical Center and so on and so forth, that we will continue to be a growing community. So I don't know that it's wise to shift course off a one-year, we hope is a blip and not a long-term trend of declining enrollment. I, again, every district I've talked to said that this is what happened to them. And now the biggest question is, what do you plan for for next year? How do you staff for next year? What should the projections be for the following year?
And Dr. Marvin, if I can just ask one more question. I remember when you were talking about the Boundary Adjustment Committee, that the goal, once we adjusted the boundaries, was to have occupancy in our new buildings that was between 80 and 95%, correct?
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
Yep. And if you took these numbers and you put them against what we have, maybe not look at high school, but our middle school and elementary school, every school could probably be perfectly at 80%, meaning there'd be room for growth in every school if we get those boundaries tuned up the right way.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. You always give us good information in a way that's really easy to understand and very viewer-friendly as well. So thank you for that. All right. We will move to 7.06, Authorization to Secure Proposals for Superintendent Search Services. Mr. Munoz, do you want me to take this one?
Yes, I thought that was, yes.
Oh, good. Okay, okay. Board members, you recall that at our last study session, we did not vote, but we tended to agree that as we move forward, we want to find an interim superintendent for about a year while we are doing a superintendent search for a long-term superintendent. We also agreed that we would use a consulting service to do the search. Today, we have a two-part resolution in front of us that we will, hopefully today, will vote on. The first part is about doing the interim search. The second part is about doing the permanent superintendent search, both involve using consulting services. Now, my recommendation, and this is totally subject to amendment, would be that for the interim search, rather than getting, taking that out for bids and rather than talking with a number of consulting firms, for the interim search only, we would go ahead and choose the Minnesota State School Board Association's search service. We have a long relationship with them. We're members of that organization. We use their legal services. I think it would simplify the process. I trust them. Had conversations with them about the services that they can provide. Talked with them that we are most likely interested in an interim, who is somebody who is already in Minnesota, knows the law, knows the finances, that type of thing. So that's why the resolution is written the way it is. If your appetite is to get proposals for both interim and the long-term superintendent, we could certainly do that as well. So this is a little bit out of the ordinary. But if you want to have a brief discussion about that before we go to the resolutions, I'd certainly invite that at this time. Ms. Workman?
Yes, I almost forgot about those other buttons I have to click at the top.
And now you remembered.
And now I remember. No, I can remember it was kind of like, all right, I've been having issues with my internet all night. So it'll probably go out right now. So I have some concerns about not offering any other search firm the opportunity to present a proposal to the district for an interim superintendent or, and/or a permanent superintendent. And I do have a resolution to, to the amendment once we've finished our discussion. But my thought was that the services and the cost from a search firm that can be, that can do both of those things, an interim and a permanent, might be different from two separate search firms. One to do the interim, one to do the permanent search. Furthermore, if we go just with the interim search commitment for right now and then add on later with the same firm, the cost might not be the same as if we were to get all of it in one package. My thought is that we would not be actively looking for a permanent superintendent at this point. But later in the summer or the fall or whatever the recommendation of the search firm is to begin that search, we would do it then. But I would feel much more comfortable if we could just get all of this nailed down at once, which is, like I said, why I have an amendment to the resolution.
Okay. And thank you for holding off on that for just a minute. Ms. Amundson?
I'm interested in seeing the text of Director Workman's amendment because I'm not understanding how that's different from what we have currently. But I wanted to go back to what Chair Marvin was saying about MSBA for the interim. And I attended one of the convention roundtables where they talked about their services. And I think they would be uniquely able to find a interim because of their familiarity with the superintendents throughout the state who are recently retired or, for whatever reason, are job-seeking. So I would be, I would be in support of that for expediency. But again, I would want to hear a little bit more from Director Workman about. So are you saying that we would look for one firm to do both, starting in the year?
I would say, yeah, I would say one firm to do both if, depending on what their proposals are. I mean, we might actually come back to saying, well, we have a proposal from MSBA to do just the interim or to do everything. You know, so it wouldn't have to be set in stone. But I would like to see the RFP going out to cover as many possibilities as possible before we start excluding any options. In my experience with the search firms that we've had recently, back in 2011 and also before that, that they are also very familiar with Minnesota. A couple of them are actually based, at least in part, in Minnesota. I don't think that they would have difficulty in getting access to any information about recently-retired superintendents if that would be your concern. Does that help to address your question?
Thank you. Let's see if Ms. Nathan wants to add to that or something.
I can find the button. I would, I think I would be willing to consider a, either contracting with MSBA or going out for a proposal process for the interim. But I don't think I'm in favor of going out simultaneously for both the interim and the, we're calling it permanent superintendent. I wish we could find a different word for that. But because I don't want to delay the process of getting the interim firm. So if we, if we're going to go through a selection process, I don't want to delay the process of searching for an interim superintendent delayed by the process of selecting a firm that's going to handle the work for searching for the superintendent, starting in, whether, if it starts in the summer, if it starts in the fall. So I would be in favor of either MSBA or an RFP for interim and then maybe even delaying the RFP for the superintendent who would start a year from now, even to have some spacing between the two.
And let me just jump in, Mr. Barlow. I see your hand. I think that's an excellent suggestion. We've actually had MSBA suggested that, that you don't do both at once. So how about for the sake of the discussion, which I hope we can keep relatively short, we do this. We have two resolutions here. Let's just address the first one about contracting with a search firm for the interim. And I think the decision behind us is, do we want to go out for RFPs or do we want to go ahead and contract with MSBA? Mr. Barlow?
Well, I'm in favor of the resolution as submitted and would like to perhaps move this. We're discussing, Chair, I guess I'm asking, were you looking to move this to action? And if so, were you waiting for a board member to do so? Or were you giving us the opportunity to discuss it before moving it to action?
The answer is yes. Yeah. To me, I hope we can keep this relatively simple. At this point, from my perspective, we're voting on whether to use, to decide right now we're going to use MSBA for the interim search or to send out RFPs for the interim superintendent search.
So can?
Go ahead.
What would be, so can the resolution be read that you just verbalize, so a motion can be made?
Sure. So if we're ready to do this, if somebody could move the resolution as it's written to action, we could vote it up or down. And then if it's voted down, we could vote on the resolution that Director Workman has ready, which is basically the same thing, except we would get our FPs for.
Well, I move that the resolution be moved to action.
At this point?
At this point, well, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm still, I'm still not sure. I thought, I really didn't want to get into a protracted discussion about Robert's rules. But do we vote on an amendment first to the resolution before we vote on the amendment that's there? Do we have to vote it down? I did put two things, I did put two things in the chatroom for you to actually look at.
Okay, the resolution hasn't.
Can I make a point of order? There's a motion on the floor and we need a second before we can continue.
Right.
And I will second, I will second the motion.
Okay.
So that we can discuss.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion?
Yes. Melissa, did you want to go first? You just put your hand up.
Yeah, I just would really like to hear my fellow board members' thoughts as to the pros and cons because, you know, this is a change to what I had considered based on the materials that were provided to us. So this is a new concept to me. So if anyone feels strongly one way or another, I would just like to hear for my own benefit in deciding what are the pros and cons in moving ahead right away with the MSBA versus what are the pros and cons of getting a proposals for a search firm to find interim. I mean, the obvious one would be the speed factor. So what else am I missing?
I would say that I can't vote on anything to contract with any firm until I actually see what their proposal is, see what our options are, see what their services are, and see what their cost is. And we don't have anything, we don't have that yet. So if, if we were to say, to authorize the administration to secure proposals to recruit an interim superintendent, or firm to recruit an interim superintendent, MSBA would be able to offer its package, you know, with their services and the cost. And if there are any other firms, they could do the same thing. But I'm really reluctant to jump in and say we're going to contract with MSBA until I actually know what their services are, what they can do for us, and how much it's going to cost.
All right.
And I'm willing, I'm willing to, certainly willing to put off the permanent superintendent search firm if that seems to be more the will of the board. I haven't heard everybody speak to that yet, but.
So for the, for the sake of expediency, my suggestion would be that we vote down this resolution that Chair Workman, you propose your resolution and that we would then vote on that one. Is that making sense to folks? I mean, we still may end up with MSBA as our interim search firm, but that we would.
Chair Marvin, can I make another point of order? I believe, I lost you for a minute. I believe Director Workman would need to amend the resolution to change the language.
Right.
And then we would vote on the amendment and then we'd vote on the resolution.
Well, yeah, and we could do it, we could do it one, either way. But we have, this has been moved and seconded. At this point, we can still have it amended.
I would like, I would like to make an amendment that reads as follows. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent, Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to secure proposals for the purpose of recruiting an interim superintendent with a start date of July 1st, 2021. And it's in the chat if you would like to read it as well.
Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there a second to that motion to amend the resolution?
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Everson, will you call the roll for all those? Call the roll for amending the resolution?
Thank you. Amending the resolution. Clerk Amundson?
Hi.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong. I think now we need to vote on the amended resolution. We voted to amend, okay. So let me read the resolution and thank you Chair. Thank you, Ms. Workman, for putting it in the chat. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to secure proposals for the purpose of recruiting an interim superintendent with a start date of July 1st, 2021.
Move of approval. Workman?
Second amendment.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Everson, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Let's read the second. Second resolution. Would someone move that to action? Second part.
I will, do you want me to read it or you just want me to move it?
Move it.
I will move it to action. I will move that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to secure proposals for permanent superintendent search services.
Be moved to action?
Yes.
Yes.
Second amendment.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion moving this to action? All right, Ms. Everson?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
And Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
The resolution is now an action item. Is be it further resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to secure proposals for permanent superintendent search services.
Move of approval. Amundson?
Do we have any more discussion?
I think I know what you're going to do. We're voting on it right now. Could we have a discussion? I think you want to have after we've finished. Thank you.
Yep.
I believe we need a second, so I'm going to second.
Second. Garcia?
All right. Sorry, I lost track there. It's been moved and seconded. So if you want discussion now, this would be the time to have it. My apologies. Ms. Workman?
Okay, I don't see that this is immaterially different from what I proposed, except that it's in two different statements.
Exactly.
If the intent, if the intent of the board is not to have a permanent superintendent search starting now, but we are authorizing the administration to secure proposals for the purpose of recruiting an interim super, I'm sorry, a permanent superintendent.
Yeah, and the suggestion would be, all we're doing is saying, when we do it, we want you to do those. And I think this can be a discussion for another time. It's been recommended that we do the interim search first before we even put out an RFP for long-term superintendent.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And, oh, now we just have to vote. I'm losing track here, among other things. Ms. Everson, would you call the roll?
I think she.
Can I add a question?
Go ahead.
Is this where I would propose an amendment to the resolution that's just been read?
This is the second part, this is the second part of the original resolution.
Well, the point has been raised that permanent is maybe not the best choice of words. And I'm wondering how it would be possible for us to replace the word permanent with long-term?
An amendment could, could be made, just changing that particular word. It was more a theoretical question on, on my point. So you let me know where we are with this and I'll try to capture everything.
I, I would feel comfortable changing that word, but I'm not sure where I make that amendment.
Again, the motion's been moved and seconded. I think that you can make an amendment to change that at any time. So if you want to, oh, gosh, if you want to do that now, you can.
Yes, you can.
And move to amend the resolution to replace the word that permanent with long-term?
Is there a second?
Second. Workman?
The motion has been made and seconded to change the term in the resolution under consideration from permanent to long-term. Ms. Everson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think we still have to vote on
On the action.
amended resolution. And okay, so the motion as amended, or the resolution as amended, be it resolved, School Board of Independent School, be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to secure proposals for a long-term superintendent search services.
Move of approval. Workman?
Second.
Second. Garcia?
Ms. Everson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. You know, in my head, I didn't see it going that long. But thank you. All right, we've, we've got some work done there. 7.08, process for naming the new middle, middle school. This is just a discussion item. We had, have had quite a bit of discussion about naming the elementary school and the process that was used. We've had suggestions from people, including those on the board, that as we name the middle school, we maybe make it a more student-centered process. I mean, there are all kinds of things we can do to make sure that we have that the process is really inclusive and that we have criteria that might encourage people to come up with names that are different from the ones that, that that we tend to use for naming schools in Rochester. My suggestion, and again, this is not a vote, it's just a suggestion, that the Community Engagement Committee, with input from any board members who care to email them, and I know Ms. Amundson already has a plan that she has suggested, come up with a process to be used for naming the new middle school. That we would propose that process to the board at a board meeting within the next month. And that the board would then vote on the process for going forward with naming the new middle school. Any ideas, conversation? Ms. Workman? Ms. Workman?
Yes, all right. I turned myself off, which is maybe a good thing. Should have left it that way. No, I agree with the process that you, the process to determining the process that you've just suggested. I was a little concerned that we were going to have to come up with the process tonight and I hadn't, didn't have it in my head to do that quite yet. So I like your idea with what Clerk Amundson has, has recommended. So I have nothing else to offer as an alternative.
All right, if, if I don't hear any disagreement with that, the Community Engagement Committee then, and Ms. Amundson, I'll get to you in a minute, will propose a process that the School Board would then vote on, just the process, not the name. And of course, input from you and others would be welcome. Ms. Amundson?
I just, I'm confused because I didn't recommend the process that Director Workman just mentioned, but.
No, but I know that in the past, you have, in fact, I got an email from you that you said, maybe this is a process that we could use for naming a school. I didn't mean to call you out in public, but I.
Director Workman did. Director Workman said she was in favor of what I put forward, but that hadn't come to light yet, so.
Again, if, if we're okay with the Community Engagement Committee undertaking this process to come up with a process, and I'm not seeing anybody that's shaking their heads, let's just decide that we've agreed on that. So thank you. The next item. 7.09, naming the new elementary school building. And we've talked about this a few times. My suggestion is that we will, we would tonight revote on the two names that the process that was used for these school came up, for this school determined. This was a community.
The only reason.
Okay. The process included getting names submitted by community members. They were reviewed by community staff stakeholders. There were criteria for these names and those were made available to the, to the community. There were bilinguals who were involved in translating the information that went out to the community after the top names were, were brought forward. There was a community-wide vote. That ballot was also translated into a number of different languages. The process that was used then include the top five names coming back to the community. They suggested the top two, and then the School Board was tasked with voting on those two. Whether this would have been the process that we would have invented or not, it was the process that we agreed to as a board. The community did what we asked them to do. Two names came to the board for the vote. The two names were Henry Plummer Elementary School and Overland Elementary School. So my suggestion at this point is that we revote on these two names, stay true to the process that we agreed to, and then come up with a different process for naming the middle school. Discussion? Director Garcia? Director?
Sorry. So I, I guess I want to honor the fact that the community did what we asked them to. And the other people that helped us, committee and staff members, also did what we asked them to do. So we need to own, and it sounds like that's what you're doing, Chair Marvin, is we need to own that as the board, we made this issue for ourselves. So I want to acknowledge that everybody else did what, what we asked them to do and the fault is with us and we are frustrated with what we have done or did not do. However, as I think that Riley so beautifully put it, on behalf of Regan, that the names that were brought forward as the, the top two on behalf of Regan, that the names that were brought forward as the, the top two do not reflect towards the equitable strides, I think is what she said, that are reflective of, of what, you know, that we're adamant of making in the district. So while I'm happy to entertain another vote on this, my vote is not going to change. And I do that on behalf of other minoritized groups that I think continuously, even if they participate, are outweighed by, you know, majority groups. So I, I, I'm okay with another vote, but I will hold to the vote that I gave previously.
And I, I respect your message, and, and regardless of what this is, I think that the message that you, you eloquently spoke to last meeting and, and today is that we need a different process going forward. And I think Riley, you know, was the one that really highlighted that as well, for, for our middle school, absolutely. Ms. Nathan?
Oh.
No? All right. We have then, oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Mr. Barlow and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Well, it is true that in September, this board was given the opportunity to review a process at our September 1st meeting, 2020, in fact. It was a, it appeared under process of naming the new elementary school. It, it did consist of five components, okay? Except community submissions, a timeframe was identified, it was then given to a task force, then community voting occurred over a span of some, looks like 13 days. The School Board was briefed on this December 15th. And, you know, what I realize is, it's, in this instance, it's less about what I think as a board member, because the process was, it's what the community thinks, not what I personally think. Yeah, I saw some great names, you know? Who can ever, you know, I'm always gonna be down for Dr. Martin Luther King, you know? But the point is, you know, we asked the community to come up with the names. They did. I think we risk losing a lot of community support when we ask them to do something, and then we kind of turn our nose up at what they do. To me, that's personally highly offensive if, when they offer a response to our request, because it's different than what we maybe personally wanted to do ourselves. We vote contrary to that. I will vote, not because I want to be true to how I voted last time, but what I've learned as being a member of the board, when you get new information or when you're made more familiar with process, then it gives you opportunity to perhaps consider more thoughtfully or differently the decisions you're about to make. And so I, I continue to trend toward supporting the community in what they have suggested, the, the two things which rank, one and two. And so that's my, not two cents, five cents worth right there.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. McLaughlin?
Can I come at this topic mainly maybe from a little bit different perspective? Because I was not on the board when this process was developed and voted on. But I take a little bit different approach, because my question has always been, I, I guess I can phrase it this way. Are we making an assumption that the facility's task force and elementary and middle school design teams followed all three of the criteria that are identified in our background information? That's where I struggle, in the, in the coming from the 400 names submitted to the five. Did the specific issue of, I want to find it here. Does the name create, does the name choice consider the diverse community that they serve? That's the question in my mind, is going from the 40 to the five. Do I have confidence that that particular criteria was considered? Or are we just making the assumption that those committees included that in their narrowing from the 40, the 400 to the five?
Well, that's a good question. I think when a committee is charged, you know, with particular criteria, that we take it sort of on a question of trust, that if, if we say that these are the criteria, that those were the ones that they used. And I don't know, it looks like Ms. Nathan or Mr. Barlow, do you have the final top five names there? Remember what they were?
I have them in my head, I think, if I want to refer.
It was, it was Henry Plummer, Martin Luther King Jr., Overland, Sarah Berger Stearns, and Wokes Upay.
So, so those were the five. They, they voted, the community then voted on the top two. And that's what we have in front of us right now. So I would like, these are both action items. I would like us to
And Chair, Chair Marvin, I guess if I could just speak briefly again, I'm, one of the reasons I'm bringing this up is to inform us for our future processes. Is, do we want to be more explicit, you know, having a report back from a committee in part of the process, so that we know and have that confidence that, that this information is being used?
Ms. McLaughlin, I think that's a really good suggestion. Thank you for that. Ms. Nathan?
And I, I'm not asking Dr. McLaughlin to answer this question. I guess maybe asking a superintendent or the staff. I'm assuming the criteria that Dr. McLaughlin is referring to is the criteria in the background information for this agenda item that talk about, you know, what, basically which names are in the scope of, of what could be selected. So for example, we've received a number of recommendations that we name a school after the lovely Amanda Gorman, who spoke the poem at the inauguration. And one of the criteria is that it can't be a person who's living. Although that would be a lovely idea, but we can't, you know, name a, name it after someone who's living. So is that a fair assumption for many of the staff who was involved with the process? That the criteria that they used continued to follow those three pieces of what names were in the, in the categories acceptable?
Yes, and I would say they used the criteria to identify the five, and then the community voted on their picks for, of the top five. I don't think we asked the community to, when you're voting, keep the criteria in mind for how you would vote for one of the five. But for selecting of the five, yes, the criteria was kept in mind.
At this point then, we have two action items. I'd like to read each of the two. The first one's about Henry Plummer, the second one's about Overland, and have a vote on each of those two. First one is be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 select Henry Plummer Elementary School as the name for the new school. Someone move it?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Workman.
Ms. Beverson, will you call the roll? Oh, we'll, we'll vote aye or nay for, for that one, and then we'll vote on Overland.
Can, can we read the resolution, just so we're clear on what it is we're each voting on?
Right now, we're voting on Henry Plummer as the name for the school. We'll vote this one up or down, and then we'll vote on Overland Elementary School, and vote that one up or down.
What if they both, I mean, what if the first one passes, then we don't need to vote for the second one, correct?
Yeah, correct. But I'm, I'm thinking that with all of us knowing that we only have two choices, and hopefully, we know how we will vote on each, that that won't happen. We have more questions here. Ms. Workman? Oh. No? Ms. Nathan? No, okay. All right. Ms. Beverson, will you call the vote for Henry Plummer Elementary School?
Henry Plummer Elementary School, aye or nay? Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Nay.
Director Garcia?
Nay.
Director McLaughlin?
Nay.
Chair Marvin?
Nay.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Nay.
And Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
We have two ayes and five nays.
Thank you. That motion does not pass. Second resolution, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 select Overland Elementary School as the name for the new school.
Clerk Amundson?
I think we need to, uh
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move, move.
Second, Garcia.
Thank you. Ms. Beverson?
Clerk Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Nay.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Treasurer Workman?
Aye.
The name of the new elementary school in Rochester, Minnesota, the newest one, will be Overland Elementary School. Three, four, five, six, and one, six to one. Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Beverson. The motion passes. 8.01, future School Board discussions, considerations. This is an announcement. Data needs superintendent reflection, resurrecting the School Board listening posts, School Board compensation, School Board return to in-person meetings. You have those on your notes. Are there any of those that you would like to put on the agenda for a, a meeting in March? Ms. Amundson?
I have a question about the compensation issue. That was kind of put on hold while things were in flux, and then now we have new board members. And so since Director Schlusner had been on that committee, I'm wondering who would be a replacement for him, and could we meet again to get that person up to speed and decide whether or not we want to bring forward another proposal? Maybe it would make sense to ask for a volunteer, or...
Ms. Workman, are you volunteering?
Well, I was already on the, I was already on the committee, so yeah, I'll stay on the committee. No, I think that's a really good idea. It would give us an opportunity to review the material that we already had and get whoever the third person is up to speed. I really think it needs to be a three-person committee, not just two.
All right, Mr. Barlow?
And you're looking for ideas to be included on the March agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to have in-person meetings as an item on the March agenda.
So let's do this. Let's put in-person meetings on the March agenda. The compensation issue, if you are willing to be on a group to come up with a proposal for that compensation thing, would you let me or Director Nathan know that you're willing? And we will contact those people and turn that over to you. Director Nathan, you have a something.
In response to Director Barlow's request, it's, we've already been requesting information from our technical team, responsible for our audio/video of our meetings, and our communications director about how we could make in-person meetings happen. We may not have the information we need to make that decision by the first meeting in March, but we'll know more, I think, as we get closer to that date. So we may not be able to have a conversation in March, because we may not have all the information we need by then.
We'll, absolutely. We'll bring this forward though, as items that we're interested in discussing, and we'll see if it can happen in March. I think that's the suggestion, that if we can do it then, we'll do it then. Any other issues on this list? Director Garcia?
So none that are already on the list. I was, I think, add something.
Absolutely.
I, I would like to have a discussion. I think there are a number of us today that maybe would like to have further discussion about a district-wide mental health sort of baseline survey.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Director Workman?
Yes. Do we need, still need to keep the superintendent's reflection as a future item? Maybe that's something you and the executive team would like to have a discussion about.
We can do that.
When you meet.
Yep. Anybody else? All right. We have a name for a new elementary school. Oh, sorry, Director Garcia, something else? Okay. We have a name for a new elementary school, Overland. It's a good name, and I know our community would be proud, and I'm excited about the process for our new middle school as well. I think it can really be a community-wide process and event. And this meeting is adjourned at 9:16 PM.